Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. All right. Any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we, I know Cole had let us know that he could not make the meeting tonight. So do we have any announcements? Do we have amendments? Oh, I missed that, sorry. Amendments, yes, do we have?
Yep, we have one amendment. We're going to add an update on negotiations and we thought we'd put that under nine A.
Right after nine A, okay. Yeah, and that is a standing agenda item that just fell off for this particular agenda.
Correct.
All right, sorry, now on to announcements.
I don't think we had, I actually remember, do you, no, there isn't any, yeah. So I would just, oh, just, obviously for those that weren't there, graduation happened, successful, timely, a lot of great celebrations, and end of the year, things have happened at all of our schools, again, nice culmination of activities, including some follow-on activities of which, you know, kids have continued to get together, there was a, I don't know, how was the show, did you hear about the Lake Monsters, a good show of Rick Marquardt's students?
It was a great show.
Yeah, so.
And the team did well.
Yes, so, no, it was really, so it's been a nice culmination of a strong year. And, again, we're off to a whole lot going on in the school as we try to figure out, you know, getting projects done and lined up, and you'll see some of that in the bid stuff tonight. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think Cole will be coming on to, or being on the board as our senior representative, and my recollection is we started the selection of a junior representative right after the start of school, and that started with a solicitation of applications through Mr. Burke. Is that your recollection too, Bridgette?
I think we were a little behind that schedule, but that would be the desired timeline to get it right out of the gate, I think.
Yeah, and I-
My recollection is that we had been doing the application process in the spring, and then in the fall, we've been interviewing, you know, candidates. I think we interviewed Cole and Amelia last year, right after school started, because they had already kind of gone through the application process. So I think we're behind.
So I would like to engage Cole, if we can put this on an agenda that he will be in attendance at, to really come out of the gate strong, and then work with Mr. Burke on the application process and getting the word out to students who might be interested so we can get a junior rep on as soon as possible after the start of the school year.
So we'll add that to an upcoming agenda.
Yeah, that'd be great.
When we know he's going to be around.
When we know he'll be at, yeah. That'd be great. And maybe we can just reinforce the selection criteria with Mr. Burke over the summer so that that's kind of in queue for everything else that goes out to students. Great, any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, City-School Collaboration.
So last night, we had a steering committee meeting, and, again, pretty robust conversation about 180 Market Street, and kind of current state where we are, and also expectations on moving forward. And again, now, pretty much, there's a lot more detail there, I think other people will probably cover more of that. We certainly want to encourage community members to be participating, if they can, and coming to steering committee meetings, and we would love for any of their input and questions along the way. We've got a lot going on, specific certainly to the collaboration with the city around the construct of 180 Market Street, safety, road construction, new construction, you know, it's going to be really, really a busy, a busy summer. Busy summer, busy fall, you know, busy couple of years, actually, so. A lot of ground was covered, and we also talked about communication strategies around how we can continue to, you know, keep working on that. We have some obligation to give a little bit more priority around what types of things we would like to see focused on.
And could we, could we include resending out that-
That list.
-tactical list for a meeting with, for a brief discussion or prep?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I think that one of the big takeaways for me is there's a fairly extensive list of actions that need to happen in relatively short time period for, to reach groundbreaking for city center, and among those are some districts approval, district approval on several things, but there are also other parties that need to provide some approvals to move the process forward. So, at this point, we have our council, David Rue, working with the city's council, Andrew Bolduc, on the addendum that was provided at the June, no, May-
May eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Eighth meeting.
In terms of, really, the due diligence the school district had done on the stormwater concept plan, that does not stand in the way of the city moving forward on the engineering design to finalize that, but it certainly are critical prerequisites to the district for consideration and implementation as it relates to a number of different areas that not only include stormwater, but also just safety issues on the site, communication on any major traffic issues, a whole host of things that impact student, staff, families, and so forth. So, we discussed that, and that was obviously in the, in the bigger umbrella of other approvals that the city needs to secure to move that forward. So, there was some discussion of a July tenth date. Was that to receive the packet of info?
I think that was, they were looking for a decision point, I looked, it sounded like, from what I understood, and Kevin Dorn recently just put out a, an email, I think just now, maybe within a couple of hours, kind of outlining some of those timelines. I haven't really had a chance to look at it much, but, um-
The email outlined that we should receive a packet of information by July fifth. He's really hoping for signatures from us, or at least approval from us at our July tenth board meeting, which was meant to be a very scaled back board meeting to really just focus on hires. Many of us are doing it by phone. So, that five days is, is a pretty-
Tight.
-tight timeframe, given that we've seen none of the documents that-
It's also on the heels of a holiday.
Right.
So, yeah. We did communicate that last night at the steering committee, so, at a minimum, we know that's the target date for receipt. We know there are other approvals in there that will affect that timeline, and then what we had communicated is if we can't do that at the tenth meeting, which as you said, Bridgette, was a really scaled-down meeting from a board agenda standpoint, we could work to schedule a special meeting for further consideration. But it's really, I kind of look to you, David, and maybe to you, Gary, as well, it's really your availability to review that packet and make a recommendation, too, so-
Yep.
I'm not sure where that falls.
Yeah, and I mean, I, yeah, and I think, you know, there needs to be some level of fairness to allow us to do that with some pretty, you know, sharp eyes on it, too, you know, given where we're at, so. Mm-hmm. So that's city-school, and we also have some meetings between us, we haven't totally discerned whether those meetings are a go or not, I didn't walk away with it that we have those scheduled or not, with Kevin and Helen and you and I.
I think we agreed we were going to at least kick them off, yeah. So what was the, the next one is?
Yeah, it wasn't, I thought it was the twenty-eighth, but I think we're going to go to the next one, or have an alternative date in there. Kevin got the dates from Helen, and he hasn't shared them with me. Again, we had a list, so-
So if we can confirm the next one, okay.
Yep, so I'll follow up with you.
All right. Anything else on city-school collaboration? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, Superintendent's Report.
So I'll be pretty quick on the, on this one legislative update, I mean, I don't have to be quick, but, you know, there's, there's a lot. And so in this packet, this is, again, a shared correspondence that comes to you from both VSA and VSBA, and you guys probably see it, too. I just felt like it was at least important to provide it, and, you know, I'll touch on just a couple of quick things, which Gary and Amity are actually going to hit on, but on page two, you know, the Ed funding bill increases average statewide tax rate by one cent, and the property yields are there, and so they're going to review with you a little bit in your packet, what's changed and some of that. But again, that was a big part of some of that work, again, we don't get a lot of that until, again, the very end, as you know. Again, I'm, I won't spend a ton of time, Act forty-six delays, you know, there's a lot in there, and again, that has implications on the overall Ed spending, just because of, currently, there's some that are held up and some legal implications, so, again, there's some uncertainty there, but, again, I think it's just important to note some of that. The lead testing, again, a lot of information on this, and Gary and Bart and staff are involved in and will be around the whole process by which we have to do for every drinking fountain area, anywhere there's, you know, essentially water being dispensed that might be consumed, has to be tested. That's no, that's no easy undertaking.
We did complete the TAP inventory requirement today. It was due on the twenty-eighth, but those guys did a tremendous job. We successfully submitted all five schools and the concession stand TAP inventories today.
So, we're, we're well-positioned. I have particular concern around, I don't know necessarily for us, but I'm just generally watchful of what's going to be the remediation outline, so if there are, whether us or others, how that, where's that resource going to come from? I'm just, I'm just worried about that, and I've stated that a little bit, kind of on the facility side. As a, as a quick sidebar, actually, today, as I was meeting with Gary briefly on, on VPR, I don't know if anyone was listening this evening, I think it was probably recorded at noon time, but it was talking about school construction. And I forget the gentleman who was being interviewed now, but just really talking about it coming back. So again, there was some conversation, you know, this legislative session, but it did not, did not stand, and so there's been a fair amount of conversation because of a lot of the concerns that are coming forward.
Just a quick anecdotal comment, I don't know how it came up in conversation, I don't even remember who it was with, but on the, on the drinking, on the drinking water, there, I became aware there was a school system, I think it's local, that on the fountains install filters, so that was remediation that was done, it might have been for unrelated purposes, but I think a lot of us have seen fillable stations now in other areas where you can fill water bottles.
Yeah. And I'm not able to articulate, talk about, you know, what filtration-
Right.
...and lead can be, but-
I have no idea.
You know, we know there's a lot of other particulates that get pulled out. Page nine talked a little bit about the whole remediation piece, which eligible cost, that was, again, a lot of this report did focus on, on that work. And so-
It sounds like the state is going to cover testing on fixtures, right? So when you say that there's a concern on your part, is it a concern that it's going to be some bigger part of the infrastructure leading up to that fixture, and it's not clear who pays for that, or what?
Right, so if, if the data comes back at some point for Vermont, that we've got, you know, fifteen schools that are woefully out of compliant, and all the piping is running through the slab of the concrete, up and wall, you know, then you've got a major infrastructure upgrade to mitigate, or you've got to be running, you know, potable water some different way, so-
And so that piece is not clear, who would-
That's not, that's not clear to me, and I don't think, because they don't really know the scope of this, this is in part what the conversation on the radio was, is we don't really know the conditions of a lot of our schools, so we don't really know the implication and the cost. We're, we're pretty fortunate, again, we through master planning and visioning did phase one, and we know generally where we are with kind of those mechanical, structural, electrical issues-
Yeah.
...which is no small amount of money to remedy, and I'm quite certain that others will be in a, in either a similar or more severe place. So, I don't know if there's particular questions, there's a lot, a lot in here, but just felt like we should at least highlight some of the activities from the legislature. Good? So next on the report is to talk a little bit, just to update you on the yields and the equalized pupil update. We did get a finalized yield and, and equalized pupil update. This generally happens, remember, we talked about this all, all budget year, that those are likely to change, and this year was, was no exception, they made some slight changes to that. I would say equalized pupil was all over the place, you know, in the state, we actually stayed fairly consistent, but there was some significant activity going on and changes for some of our other districts, and that was, I don't know how many versions they went through, but I want to say it was somewhere in the number of, you know, twenty or twenty-one versions before they kind of were able to nail that down. So again, I, we're lucky to have both Gary and Amity here to talk a little bit about both the yield, and then we'll walk right into an update on our, on our financial conditions as we end out 2019. So, again, these guys have been, you know, entire year, we also have both Joanne and Mike going to join, so I've got central office heavy tonight, and I'm proud of them, and I'm proud of the work that we've done. You know, we're not a, we're not a huge staff, but, you know, there's a lot of really important work that has happened to support our kids and to support this community, so, thanks for being here.
So the census, I'm sorry, the yield data is fairly benign, a small reduction, twelve dollars, or, wait a minute, I'm sorry, not good math, it went from ten six 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 to ten six four eight for the final legislative approved yield, and then equalized pupils went from twenty-five thirty-six to twenty-five forty. So those are, those are, you know, posing directions for budget, budget impact, so they, they come fairly close to canceling each other out. So, pretty confident that, you know, the approved information that was in the budget book to include, you know, assessed, estimated assessed values, there won't be any shock to taxpayers.
So Gary, is this the revised tax rate, then?
Yes.
And what was it before? Is it on yours than where I'm?
Look on that second page, let's see it. I do not have my glasses.
One dollar six sixty, six zero two six, and now it's one zero six, one six zero three, so it's a change of-
This is what was printed. And that's, so that's the difference.
Very, very normal.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, so what got printed and what was voted on was the one point six zero two six?
Right. And it's now one point six zero three, zero.
It's very close. It would just be helpful next year, just if, if, you know, even just like a four-line little analysis of like, this is what the yield number was, and this is how it changed, and, you know, the things you just said to us would just be helpful to, mainly that tax number, you know, to say, what did we say to voters, and how has it changed, would be helpful. This year, it's so tiny, I can see, you know, it's not as important as potentially in some other years, but, but yeah, it would be helpful.
This is, this is, again, where we get ourselves, you know, people begin to lose a little bit of like faith and trust sometimes, because this is what we print, and then what happens is a result of those state factors come out after, and then people will refer to the next budget year, when we refer back to our previous data, they'll say, that's not what it reads. And so I think, you know, we may be able to just say, hey, make sure that you know that this is an insert, you know, into the budget book if you still have it, or something like that, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, it might be a good precursor right out of the gate to have that summary sheet of this is what the budget you voted on-
Yeah.
-after we got the data from the state, this is how it changed, so it's the new base off of which we start.
Yeah, I'm tempted to even say we should advertise it-
Yeah.
-a small ad, because I do think people are surprised sometimes when they get their tax bills, and I feel like in the last couple of years, this year, it's basically flat to what, it was, it was the closest I've seen it in the years that I've been paying attention to what it was going to be. We've missed the last couple of years, some good news to share with taxpayers, which is your taxes are actually a lot lower than what you voted on, and I think that because we don't publicize that at all, then we get hit the next time round, the next budget round with, well, taxes were up, you know, five percent last year, and like, actually, no, they weren't in the end, but, yeah.
So, yeah, yep.
I think, yeah, a little bit more awareness in the, of the final numbers could be helpful to folks.
So anyway, that's, we're trying to close the loop, that's often, we don't when we get information like this so late. We also, we have to make some decisions around how often we keep, we'll keep updating, because with those, I'm exaggerating probably, but it was probably close to twenty iterations of change between equalized and yield, but if we went and changed our worksheet every time, you know, with knowing that two days later, it's probably going to change again, so at some point, we just say, we're going to stick with this.
Well, is, I mean, this is, this is a final, final based on the legislative activity.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, we, we kind of wander around to try to, you know, not get too crazy on those last, those changes in the end, and just kind of say, this is the best we have, and then we're going to wait until the final.
Yeah, I'm curious as to the swings in the equalized pupils around the state.
Well, it was the census this year, the, the accuracy of the census with a lot of schools changing student information systems, they had multiple iterations to, of submittals to get that census data from the whole state, you know, finalized.
And then, then have appeal periods where people are saying, that, that doesn't seem right, you know, from our actual seated students to then, just doesn't make sense, and in some cases, that math did not make sense based on what they had in there.
They changed their collection. That, this year was the first year of the S L D S was that terminology, which is statewide longitudinal, longitudinal data system, and that was brand new, so it was-
So is that, is that database stable now and populated and-
I think that's a much more stable place than it was, certainly was during, you know, last fall and during budget season, too, yes, because they've-
We went through, we went through, we pulled a huge amount of resources to get that done. We occupied one of our conference rooms for probably five or six days with some of our frontline office staff helping to do input and changes, make sure the data was right, so we could get it. It wasn't as easy to just, you know, go ahead and then send it in, because you'd get error message back, and of course, when you get one error message, you couldn't, they didn't tell you where the error message was, so that was very difficult to try to discern that, although we were pretty successful, we had some great IT folks working with our staff, and we did a good job.
And they worked for, they worked for probably six weeks on nothing else, which was tough, but-
Yep.
Was that the only database change this year?
Uh, yes, ultimately, it ended up being the only one, you know, they were talking about the new chart of accounts, and then that was going to roll out, but they've pushed that off now until-
When is that scheduled for?
Twenty twenty-two, I think.
In your legislative update, but the, excuse me, the actual chart of accounts needs to be in place by twenty, fiscal year twenty-one, and the new SSDDMS, which is the database of our new software, will be rolling out to multi, you know, in groups now, they finally sort of realize that there's no way they can do districts at one time type of thing, so they've set us up into groups, and I think the last group is-
July twenty twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
And so you've got accounts testing the system.
Twenty-two or twenty, can we go, is it twenty-four?
Yeah, right here, it's twenty twenty, July one, twenty twenty-two, in order to allow for.
And originally, the state had all districts doing both those systems in the same-
At the same timeframe.
-school year, correct?
And we said no, we, we, we were out of the gate to say, first thing, on the chart of accounts, we don't have a, we don't have a, a book, right, we used, we've always referred to as Handbook Two, which tells you, you know, where you would put certain things within your budget. That hasn't been done, and so we've said, if that's not done, then we're not going to, we don't feel it's important, right to move forward, because where you might put something, well-educated, and where Brian might put it, maybe two different places, and then we're no better off than where we are currently.
Yeah, the premise behind getting us such a uniform chart of accounts is that we all report the same data and the same account numbers, right, so that when the state does their polling of data, it's apples to apples now instead of apples to oranges as it currently sits. I will tell you, last week, the state changed the account number structure again, so we are so thankful that we didn't put all our resources into making those adjustments because it's still not done, and it's a real challenge, and I have to tell you that there's yet another position at the A O E that is empty in our special ed, you know, finance department, so a lot of staff turnover up at the state has really caused this project to not be on task for them as far as dates, so it was the right decision for them to at very minimum push it off.
Yeah, we were pretty early out of the gate, respectfully, just saying, you know, unless we have the, the information to appropriately do it, we're not, we're not going to go forward to do something that will take a lot of time and then have to be likely redone.
And you just want to have the comfort in, you know, your large budget, that you know where all of your expenses are living and that they're being reported correctly.
I think it's the right direction, it's just the rollout and the process and their resourcing is right now, they're not there.
Right.
So we will continue to await the secret decoder ring.
Yes, yeah.
And it's going to seem like that, I tell you, it's very significantly different.
Stay tuned, yeah. So the next on the, I wanted to provide an update on kind of where we are at, at present with year-end nineteen, so we've been watching this really since March, we typically, all year long, we, we kind of were watching kind of the, the end. Every year, when we get to the March-April timeframe, when, you know, there's money, programmatic money left, we typically are a little bit more, we scrutinize that money more, because we think that the majority of it should be used and already deployed by then, and there shouldn't be a lot of additional things that you would be doing for your students, barring, you know, kind of culminating activities and things of that nature. But as we've approached the, the end of the year, we're recognizing that we're, we're right on the verge of not, and so right now, what you have in front of you is a kind of a current reality. As Amity and Gary will tell you, there's still a lot of variables between now and the, and the end of June, where we'll, we'll end, but we're wanting to give you a little bit of a heads-up and some reasons why. So again, Amity, Gary, go ahead.
So the analysis just kind of-
Nice, right? Nice, nice transition to me for you, yeah.
The, the report just sort of summarizes by our major programs, and it'll show you the budget, the actual expenses through April thirtieth at this point, and then projected expenses through the end of June with, you know, an estimate of over or under budget, and then the comments that go along with each of those program areas. So our general fund right now is looking to be estimated at a possible hundred and seventy-nine thousand over budget, with the special revenue funds coming in at ninety-seven thousand under budget, so that net difference would be at about an eighty-two thousand dollar deficit. Again, these are some estimates, some is pretty well-known, not everything is a hundred percent known. I just think it's important for us to realize this year's challenges that we faced early on was, there was a hundred and ninety thousand of revenue that was budgeted that was not, is not to be received, it was internal transfer numbers that shouldn't have been budgeted as revenue that we would be receiving, so that, that was a significant loss. And also the health care recapture that we will not be getting from the State Agency of Education of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, that was not budgeted, it wasn't budgeted that that was going to be a loss of revenue in any of our revenue accounts, so that was still counted as revenue that we were going to receive, which we will not receive. And then on the expense side, we discovered an error of input where there was a zero dropped, so the account actually was a hundred thousand dollars short of what historical spending and what it should have been budgeted at. So, and a couple of other areas that we noticed the same was vocational tuition was under budgeted. I think those estimates, they come in very late in the budget process, so I think that, you know, it, it's kind of one of those things that you can not budget enough for fairly easily, and it's grown enough over the last few years, because it's a six semester average for that cost, and we have had more students attending the tech center, so it's starting to catch up to us where the, the expense becomes more each year as those FTEs rise. So, there was under, it was just the estimates of the budget were under by, well, fifty-eight thousand is the, not, sorry, the forty-six thousand, eight fifty-two, and then we noticed there was one lease payment that was not added into the formula correctly, so that was missed when budgeting as well. So all of, with all of those totals, it's about a five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar sort of hole that we were trying to fill, and we, we feel that we froze the expenditures earlier than our normal procedure, just to sort of help each other, you know, through the process, and all of the school principals were really great about understanding why we had to do it earlier, and it was, everybody worked very collaboratively to understand that they could do the rest of the year with minimal needs at that point in time, they were frozen at the end of March. And then, we did not send one final payment in June to SEI for the support staff retirement, and the reason that we didn't do that is, we have a required minimum contribution, we historically budget more than that to try to help with that unfunded liability. Our assets have been growing quite well and healthy, and I've reported that to you folks, and we had met the minimum required contribution plus some by the end of May, so I felt it would be a way of not harming anyone, we're still making all of our obligations- We're still making all of our obligations, so that was a fifty-two thousand dollar savings of not sending money out, so.
Is that on here somewhere, Amity?
Um, you know what, I guess that note did not make it to this sheet, so. It is not written.
I think it was in the email.
Oh, yeah, I do believe I had that in the email, yes.
I think it'd be good to have this be a comprehensive, yeah, summary.
Can add it.
So hopefully, most of this wasn't a surprise because we have been talking about the, during the whole budget process, to build the twenty budget, we had identified that there was a significant, there were some significant budgeting errors and some revenue categorization errors that, that would result. So just overall, out of the five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar shortfall, the office actually collaboratively with the administration made up about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of that five fifty-eight in the general fund. So not great news. I know, these aren't final numbers. There's a fairly decent chance that, that we will shrink this a little more before the end of the year. But that's kind of, kind of where we stand.
So I'm curious, I mean, we had the discussion in, in the budget process, but, you know, I, I don't think I remember some of this level of detail in here. The healthcare recapture, that was discussed kind of ad nauseam. Was this under the amount that was recaptured or the amount that we knew about that just didn't get?
That is the amount we knew about, but I was thinking there was an offset to that in the expense side so that we really kind of counteracted that loss, but I am not seeing that that is the case. So it, you know, it, it wasn't really accounted for. We budgeted in our system for that full ed spending dollars, not reducing that by the recapture. So that is the final recapture.
How was it handled the prior year?
Same thing. That, that year though, it was understandable because we didn't get notification of that happening until, I think it was May or June even. So that budget was long passed by the time that first.
And the, can you explain the purchase services and tuition for special ed?
So, you know, those again are built on a service plan about a year and a half before you actually get to your budget year. And so you could have one student that moves into your system that you have significant expenses for. You know, in this case, I'm sure it's not just one student, but I'm just, you know, those costs are so unknown.
And the revenue return can either be the fifty-six or the ninety, but you're still.
I'm, I would say minimum, we'll get the fifty-six for sure.
But is that, is that fifty-six against the two thirty-five or you've accounted for that already?
Right, we would offset that two thirty-five by fifty-six percent of state funding.
I just wanted to say it wasn't a direct total expense.
So that, I mean, that, that fifty-six would be like a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So potentially, that one thing could actually mean that we're just barely.
Just about, right even, correct. I wanted to give like kind of a, this is what we see, but you're right, yes. It could almost bring this down to be, and some of that even could be reimbursed to us at ninety percent if that student happens to hit a threshold of fifty thousand, so, yeah.
So, I mean, one of my fundamental questions is, these issues seem to be driven by different variables. So what checks and balances do we have in the system that address sort of each of these unique circumstances?
And part of, my question about that too is, were these things caught early enough? I know like the hundred and ninety thou, like there are a couple that, that come to mind from the budgeting process that were fixed. But my question is, how many of these were not fixed for the budget year that we approved in March? And how much of these will be additional issues when we come to June of next year with respect to the budget that we're about? So along the same lines, what are the checks and balances to prevent it from happening in the future? And what was already caught or not caught? So what can we expect for next year is, is what my big question was when I looked at this.
So I can definitely answer that. We have, we've caught all of the revenue side for certain. And on the expense side, we pretty much, I think we caught it all. Now, the only thing that would continue to be possible is the special ed. Because again, we build that budget with our known factors and kind of looking ahead. But things like a student moving in or out could change things drastically. But we knew about the voc ed expenditure being under, so we fixed that. We knew about the co-curricular, so we fixed that. Moving into the twenty year, I believe we've covered and fixed the issues that we've identified here.
Quick question?
Yeah.
I, I think what the concern was, you know, are we gonna see any more, or what's written down here as errors or not? And I guess that would be separate from a high-cost student moving to the district.
Right, right.
That we can't predict ever.
Right, very true. No, you, I'm hoping, I mean, Gary checked me, I've asked our office to check me. So there was a lot more eyes and a lot more scrutiny.
Much more collaborative budgeting process for twenty.
Okay.
So from a, I guess one of my concerns is, is this a, is this a process that sort of requires multiple eyes on? Or is there something systems-wise that would address these fixes? Because they seem to be different, like the co-curricular, was that a coding error?
It's a human error.
That was a human error.
So, so.
But your point is whether or not the software or the.
Where's the system fix in, in that?
The system fixes, we, we put controls in where the process is collaborative and we've, we've got a.
More than one person.
More than one person. We've got a, we've got a business manager who is primarily gathering information, developing budget based on experience with the system. And then we've got the next level of oversight with me as operations and finance person who is double and triple checking that, asking questions, hey, you know, this looks different enough from last year, why?
Well, but by way of example, if I look at that one, for instance, if there was something that did a comparison to prior year spending, and if it was more or less five or ten percent variance, it would flag it. And that would drive that collaborative process.
Right, the, the actual software.
That was there.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is we're in the system.
Yeah, the system does do that.
It was a miss from last year. It had to say about an eighty percent variance in that budget item.
I mean, did it, did the system flag that?
So the system won't flag anything, it will run what you ask it to run for a report. And you have to read that report. So, you know, I mean, I'm thinking it was, I can't answer the question, I don't really have the answers. But I can tell you that we run reports that compare prior year. We run reports, reports that compare historical spending. The budget is loaded with a historical spending, so, yeah.
Well, I know, I know that's where many of us on the board kind of go to that when we're looking at things. I just wondered if that was a system, a system fix that you put into at least direct the person to look at, whoever's reviewing it.
On that report, check the variances.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not, I mean, I don't wanna, you know.
Nor do I.
Go into problem solving per se, but.
We are very highly aware of what you don't, you know, what you need to be really focused on. Those kinds of numbers are important to be really monitoring and analyzing every time you touch the budget.
So if I, so if I look at another one, a, a lease payment was under budgeted. What, what was the process or fix there?
So we gather every year at budget time, we gather every lease that we have out with a schedule, you know, and those are into a spreadsheet to give us what our total budget should be. And I believe that just the formula didn't get dragged down a column and it got missed. I mean, that's all I can say because I don't really have a better answer. But that's what I found when I was, when I was looking to do the twenty lease payments is that that column seemed to be missing that one payment from a lease, you know, that's been going ongoing. It just, it didn't extend in the formula.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit honestly because it sounds like the way it's being described is the problem has to happen and, and then it's identified, like, you know, there's several items here, rather than what gets identified so it doesn't happen. I don't know, I don't know if I'm asking that the right way. So that formula, I mean, is, is that a requirement that an operator, you know, bring that formula down, for instance?
Yes, it's a, I mean, it's a man-made spreadsheet.
There is some variance though, like in the leases, like transportation, right? I mean, we have, it can vary, although we generally always have lease payments because we lease our buses. But there could be years where we're leasing four, five, and then another year where we're one. So you could see some variance in that. But the reality is, to, to your point is, and I think to yours is, like, there's something different, you know, and it almost should be verified off.
It seems a lot of responsibility on individuals to be, if you've got the leases, you know, that's sort of the, the facts. And, and to, I don't know, being reliant on whether a formula got carried down or not in a spreadsheet just seems very manual to me. But, and, and I'm just trying to understand sort of, are there, the basic question I have from a board perspective is, are there fixes in place for all of these? I think Alex's question is, have we identified, have you identified everything? And then is there anything else that can be done, you know, to minimize that deficit at this point?
We're doing everything we can every day, and we have been since early March.
Yeah, and it wasn't.
With, with respect to minimizing the deficit though, I guess my question was whether the things that have been frozen or payments that have not been made, how those come back to us in the next fiscal year? So what things on here that we've frozen or not paid, for example, some maintenance stuff?
So we can't, we can't.
That's not budgeted in next year's budget, so what happens to those expenses? We can't just not do them presumably, some of them. And that was my question, is how much of the five hundred some thousand has to be paid at some point anyway? So what is the real deficit number versus just a cash flow timing number?
So, so we can't give you an exact answer, but we haven't deferred more than a, a few thousand dollars worth of, of expenses that we would have done. Fixing the air conditioning actuator in this room, we delayed from when we identified it two weeks ago. And we will fix it after July first in the, in the next budget cycle.
But that's not in the twenty twenty budget because it was in the twenty nineteen budget. And so that's carrying over, that's what I'm saying is that.
But that wasn't in the twenty nineteen budget either, that was a.
Right, it was an unbudgeted, right? We, we assumed that it wasn't, we didn't budget for the actuator issue. And again, part of the, but we do have money in maintenance and repair. So a good example was that we, again, we have resources in the twenty twenty budget that we'll be able to pull on for risk-related matters like the actuator and the air conditioner. So it is trying to mitigate the, the issue. We also, as you know, with older buildings, we have to have kind of a, a factor in there around repair and maintenance issues. And we've been pretty, pretty on spot with most of it and haven't been surprised a lot, but we still have some of that.
It is, it is a good point, and, and I feel, you know, it's my responsibility to, to bring it up that, you know, looking back at the history in nineteen, until nineteen, there was at least a small contingency somewhere between a twenty-five and a hundred thousand dollar contingency in each budget. And there's, was no contingency in the nineteen budget. So that, I don't think that's a terrific way to go for the future. A lot of, a lot of districts are running, you know, up to a one to one and a half percent contingency based on their total budget.
You're saying there was no contingency in the nineteen budget?
None.
We talked about it, and I remember bringing it up because we were concerned about how much the budget was growing. And I was assured that there were enough small contingencies under different, you know, line items here and there just to, to get us through, and that appears not to be the case.
Well, this is, this is more than contingencies.
Right, one percent of the budget, I mean, this is one percent of the budget. And that, that is, that is pretty high, I would say, yeah.
Hence the mistakes that were, some of these, these identified areas, we, we would have been fine. That being said, I think to Gary's point, you know, still, given the age of our building and the risk factors and, you know, the contingency dollars, we hate, I mean, we're also been really conscious about contingency dollars in this district because we're also trying to make sure that we're, you know, being conscious to the taxpayer and to, to the future requests that might be.
Well, and, and the reality is, most of these items are not the kinds of things we're talking about anyway. But, yeah, again, I'd kind of, Bridget's point is correct in that if there are real expenses of material value that have been deferred, we will incur them.
That's right.
And it would be something else we can't do with next year's budget because of that.
That's right.
There, there's not a significant amount of deferment at this point. We curb spending to the, to the point where we could still accomplish our, our mission as a, as a district from, from my perspective. The contingency, you know, I, I would say that the contingency is, it does roll to the, to the next budget year and, in the undesigned fund balance and counts as revenue. So it's, it's not an additional burden on a taxpayer except in the initial year that you reinstitute or institute a contingency. And it's a pretty common practice among most, most districts to have some operational contingency in each budget.
Thank you, Amity and Gary. Yeah, again, I think the important thing, the takeaway is, we want to let you know, obviously, this is, we also, some corrective actions around how we're gonna move forward, we think we're in a much better place with twenty. And.
But that brings up for me, I, I'm, I am surprised. I'm surprised by how much it is. Yes, there were some identified things during the budgeting process. But I'm really surprised that we knew the magnitude of this in March and the board's not hearing about it until almost the end of the fiscal year. And I just feel like there needs to be some other process in place where we have a check-in somewhere earlier in the year. Because I guess my follow-on question to that is, what does happen if we end in a deficit? You know, what, what does happen, how do we cover that?
So it has to go carry forward into the twenty twenty-one budget. And that's where it gets covered, will have to get corrected in the twenty twenty-one budget. And as far as, you know, letting you know, I, I agree that, you know, more can be done. We were pretty transparent in the budget development process where we had identified where there was pretty, you know, concerning areas. You know, again, I'm not wanting to say that, you know, we, we were certainly not wanting to be here. We were hoping that we would still be fine. But I think I was pretty clear with the board, was aware of a lot of the, a lot of those factors that are there. Not all of them, but a good number of them that we were, you were aware that there was some budgeting discrepancies in how they got entered in twenty nineteen. I don't know, obviously, you're probably not, Brian, coming on new, but the other board members.
So is this something we can request, kind of an update when we do close out the?
Yep, absolutely.
The books.
And you will get a final number, you know, from the auditor's work as well, so we will know.
I mean, part of this too is, we, we didn't really know where, where things were. I mean, there's a lot that was going on, I would say, in the last three weeks. And we, we had put measures, unlike every year, we, I don't think it's really good business that you come to April and May and then you're wanting as a classroom teacher or to want to spend, you know, ninety percent of your budget. Like, where's that gonna go? Why weren't you using it before, right? So we, we scrutinized. It wasn't that we didn't allow, if it was a student-driven need in activity, it just warranted an approval process that was more scrutinized than just, just the administrator signing off on it.
What, what are the levers within the educational system? Like, in my previous lifetime, we would freeze new hires, you know, there would be a number of, you know, and that's, you know, largely our, our biggest expenses are in personnel.
We froze, we froze FY nineteen spending and approved the essential requests David or I would Amity's consult.
Did that include staff?
Well, we.
Well, where we, where we could, if, if, and again, we typically don't have a lot of additional staff. But in some cases, we have places where we, where we do need to. And that's, again, special education, where those are.
Most frequently, it, anything that happens in that last three months of the school with respect to staffing changes is just a replacement of someone who resigned. So it's often not even a, it's not even an additional expense. It often is a savings if you're replacing a person with, you know, someone new. But it certainly, I don't believe there was any teaching changes that took. But it certainly, I don't believe there was any teaching changes that took place. The only thing that happens is substitutes, but those are not additional hires per se. They're just filling the holes of need there. As far as, there certainly wasn't any additional staff brought to the district at that point.
Okay.
Thanks. So we're gonna move on, and I'm gonna get the next two folks to come on up. So Mike and Joanne, come on up. So I wanted to, you know, this is again a kind of a continuation of conversation related to our MTSS work. I think everybody knows Mike and Joanne. Again-
You need a screen?
Yeah, he's gonna shine on, shine on us, so we're gonna need to move. But, you know, I, I want to, we, we've been at MTSS, you know, probably, with the exception of Elizabeth and Martin, we've been at MTSS conversations back to two thousand and nine and looking at the ways in which we can most appropriately meet the needs of students, all students. And so we, as a district, have been working at this for quite some time. As we continued that journey, obviously, there's been a series of things that have come along that have become mandated, and also through our best practice, we've recognized the need to, to do some things differently. And our professional development, I think you'll, again, see that we've been on target with, with a lot of that work. So again, I, I wanted to be able to give you a little bit of a deeper dive, our, our dive into kind of where we are, where we've been, and why we're here. So you'll hear a little bit more from Nanam, the who, what, the who, what, and where, uh, who, what, and when occurred. There we go. So I, I had, I was close on ours, but, um, so you hear a little bit more, and then we want to certainly allow a board to ask questions. But as we continue to move the district forward, you know, this is, these are critical, critical concepts for us to be able to understand and articulate, and we recognize, I recognize, the need to be able to do this in a more transparent way with community as well. So Mike and Joanne are here to help us out, you want me to, want me to advance for you, or you can?
You can, if you wanna start, Joanne, I can click for you.
So, um, thank you, David.
Yep.
So we were really hoping Mike and I to provide some clarity for you today in terms of our, the multi-tiered system of support work, and we're gonna provide you with the why, which was a big question I heard at the last board meeting, and the what and the how. So that's our plan today. Slide number two. There, so the why. All children will read and have numeracy skills by grade three. This is our ends, proficiency for all students. Um, I actually heard a board member mention at the last meeting, I watched the whole thing, that the SB ends, is all students will demonstrate academic proficiency. It's really important that we, we hit these marks, that's our why. Um, there's been numerous federal legislative requirements around the work around multi-tiered system. The No Child Left Behind Act came out in two thousand and two, where all students must be assessed on standards and make targets. Those targets were set, you probably remember some of those things that were set. It was really the first time we started to see special education students part of that assessment process. Um, and two thousand and four, the Individuals with Disabilities Act. Schools must prove that students cannot be in general education. Used to be, it was really easy to just place students with special needs outside the classroom. That, that a new way, the law really required us to show that we have tried everything in the classroom to make sure that students are able to learn, and that we also had to provide supplemental services, not supplanting services with a response intervention. So we couldn't say, um, David is not reading in the classroom, so we're gonna take him out of reading, and we're gonna put him in a different reading classroom. We couldn't do that, and that was some of the practices that we were doing in the past. That was a big change. Um, in two thousand and nine, the Common Core State Standards came out, they were defined for us, and RTI really got shifted into a multi-tiered system of supports. They were finding that it really needed to be a whole system working together in order to make sure that every child was meeting standards. And then two thousand and fifteen, the ESA, Every Student Succeeds Act, schools must have a multi-tiered system of support. So this is some of the federal legislation that's really driving some of the work that we're doing.
We had just-.
Yes, it does, it does. And then in Vermont, they just recently, the recent passing of Act one seventy-three, there were some, um, reports that informed that legislation. I think David has talked to you about the District Management Group report. And these five things that came out of that report are some of the pieces that we're really drawing from, from as we start to really examine our multi-tiered system and make sure that it's in line with what we need for kids to be reading and have numeracy skills by grade three. The Act was to enhance the effectiveness, availability, and equity of services provided to all students who require additional supports. It provides some flexibility for special education funds, so we can use that, those funds in a way that we can really improve our system of supports. The Act is also gonna give us some technical assistance, so we can work on our high-level instructional strategies, building schedules, that's part of the work that Mike and I are doing with the elementary principals as well, and early literacy and first instruction in math. So really, tier one, that first tier, universal design for learning should meet most, most needs of most students. And we're really trying to really make that a really strong first instruction for ki, for all kids. And then on top of that, as I said before, supplementing that, we need to provide additional time outside of that core instruction for students who struggle, so that they don't miss that core instruction. And then those, the students who are struggling need to receive support from skilled teachers. So teachers who really understand, have a deep knowledge about the content and how to instruct. And also, we want to create a strength incurred support model for social, emotional, behavioral supports. We've talked a lot about the resiliency work that we've done, the mindfulness, our PBIS work, all of that that we've been doing now for a number of years in, in South Burlington is really helping to have kids available to be engaged in instruction. And then the final one is provide students with more intensive needs specialized instruction from skilled experts. One of the reasons why we shifted from paraeducators to special educators is to really try and hit some of these marks. Yes, Elizabeth?
Can I clarify, is there a standard definition of skilled? Because I've heard over the years, sort of licensed, certified, skilled would, could range from being trained in PBIS to, you've mentioned content-specific, so is there a standard definition?
There's no standard, but we're looking at the research, you know, like the HADDY research, what do we need to have in place? What kind of things are gonna be, have the most effect on our, on our students? So we're really looking to use professionals who are highly trained in areas that can really, especially in academics, where you have to be able to teach, diagnose, reteach, intervene, all of those things. You have to have a high level of understanding of how literacy, what the brain research is about literacy, how kids learn how to read, you really have to have a high understanding of math concepts and where those misconceptions are, and where you're gonna target. And that's not gonna be a paraeducator that's learned how to use a program, or a teacher that's learned how to use a program. It has to really be some intense, really, understanding of mathematics and literacy in order to be able to do that. So that's what we're really looking at.
And, and, I mean, you may not wanna cover this now, but we're, we're, again, I have the perspective of sort of an uneducated listener to a lot of years of discussion around MTSS and so forth. And, you know, we, we've spent a lot of times as, as a district investing in skills associated with trauma-informed teaching.
Correct.
So some of my questions are sort of this, this shift I'm seeing from really having what I would, I would characterize as a layperson, sort of a holistic view of the student and, and the trauma-informed teaching and learning. And then this content-specific, that you're just describing like a, a, you know, high-level math concepts and, and that sort of thing, so.
I'll get to that a little bit when I talk about the what, that's a really good question, that's a really good question.
Can I ask a question before we move on?
Yep.
You just said that PBIS and mindfulness and resiliency work are making sure that kids are more available for learning. How are we determining that that's working? Because the anecdotal stuff that we get is that behavior problems are on the rise, children are less available, you know, there are all these challenges, and we're doing all these things. How do we know those things are working? Like, what are we, what information are we looking at to say this is working or it's not working, and we need to try something else?
Well, we have data through our PBIS system, so we have that data to review, and also whether kids are learning. So when they're learning, they're engaged to learn. So that's, and so what we're, we're looking at is the PBIS data shows us how many reports we have for kids in misbehavior, or, and we also have our screening data in terms of kids who are even internalizing. So we're looking at the changes of that. We have surveys that we've done for the resilience in terms of how we're implementing. It's, it's not, it's not an easy thing to measure how kids are engaging, but when kids are engaged, they learn. So we're looking at the behavior data that we have, and then we look at kids' academic progress.
We know, for instance, one, on the PBIS, one of our elementary schools, we've recently looked at that data, and that trend data, it, it looks really, really quite positive. Uh, a trend data over a, what, three-year period? I think it's a three-year period, right? There was, and so that's moving in the right direction. So informing us that the work that we're doing around being available in, in our trauma-informed practices and mindfulness practices, although you can't make a direct correlation, but we certainly can say as a result of, we're seeing that head and that, that curve bend in the right direction.
And in terms of academic progress, are you, what is the, I'm assuming you're looking at SBAK scores? What else are you looking at in terms of-
Our SBAK, our summative scores that you get in your annual ends report, so.
And you're gonna get a little bit more here in a second, I think, on that.
But what do you do for, you know, K through two? I mean, by the time you get those scores, you're talking about third graders.
So K, so K through two, we have progress monitoring data, so all the students are assessed. We have screening data that we use, and each of the schools has a data wall that they use to really look at where kids are, are they below, meeting, or above the standard? And they use those things to try and intervene with kids, so we do have that data. And that's what schools are using, but it's not reported out to the community or to the board.
It's not reported to us, yeah, that's why, that's why we're struggling, because we're sort of being told that there's this gap, there's this problem. But it's, but it's hard to, it's hard to quantify it.
But the gap is in the, is in the summative data. Yeah, the performance gap is in the summative data. Our, our subgroups are not performing as well, that achievement gap.
Okay, well, maybe we'll get to that in a minute, but, yeah, I-
Yeah, and we're not, you're not gonna see a lot of the, the data, I mean, the fact of this is, is to get you at the, the higher level information, but, um, again, through our monitoring work and progress mon, that, that will be where you'll see more of that data being represented.
So then the fall, when Mike did his end report, the smarter balance, that, that information was shared with you guys. And then that report will come out again with his end report in next fall, so we'll have updated scores then. And it shows how kids are performing, summative.
I mean, I think it's appropriate to say our, our data collection and our progress monitoring data, I mean, that's, that's an area right now that we're trying to, not only individually, school, district, but statewide, we're trying to get data systems that are, you know, more appropriate for us.
More, more quicker response.
Yeah, and so that we can inform, so that teachers can see it, you know, you know, more readily available to see where their students are today, whether individual student, their whole class, you know, to be able to have that right level of grain size to make decisions.
Next slide. So, um, and finally, for our why, we had some reasons in, in district that we really wanted to really look at improving our multi-tiered system. As Mike did report to you in the fall, our SBAK scores compare well to the state average, but at least one in five students are not meeting proficiency each year, and even fewer students from historically disadvantaged subgroups meet, are meeting proficiency. So that's of concern for us and for you, because that's, we're supposed to have all kids proficient. I mean, that's one of our ends, so we really wanna be working on that.
And to be clear, we seem to be switching back and forth. What do we mean by subgroups in this case?
Talking about-
Free and reduced.
Free and reduced lunch, disabilities, and English language learners. Those are the subgroups that we're looking at. Um, and our data needs to be more timely to respond to student learning needs. I described to you of the data walls, and our, our, um, elementary schools do regular screenings, I think, twice a year. We're talking about doing those screenings more frequently than when we identify kids and put them in an intervention or a targeted intervention, having more, like, weekly progress to really make sure the rate, because when kids are not learning, their rate has to be like twice or three times their peers, so that they can really catch up. We're really working on really trying to improve that, that's one of the reasons we wanna change. Our professional development needs a real sharp focus on content area expertise, instead of trying to do it all. We're really finding that it's hard for, we really need people to really understand deeply the math and literacy instruction. Um, and our classroom language routines and expectations need to be consistent. So we talk about the resiliency and the PBIS and the mindfulness practices. We want not only this classroom doing it well, we want every classroom doing it well, so that if kids are in a building, they're gonna have the same routines, same expectations. They can feel safe, they can be engaged, they can have a real understanding of how they need to be behaving and learning across all classrooms. That's another reason that we are looking at this. And our learning outcomes will improve for all students when we work collaboratively. So we really want our teachers to be working together around all kids. That, that, we see that's gonna be, that's another good reason to change. So these were our whys when we started to look at some of the changes we were doing to our multi-tiered system. And the why is really that we want kids reading and having numeracy skills by third grade. That's a real, a real marker for us. We'll move on to the what. So the what we wanted to make is a real system of supports that removes barriers for students. We want all students to engage in learning and meet the ends. Our goal is to design a system to get kids to that, to really be performing and proficient. So this swirl, I think you've seen this before, this is from the Agency of Education. It's, um, this is their two-point-O version, where it has the culture of continuous improvement around the outside and decision-making for excellence and equity. We've been leaders, actually, I brought this, I don't know if people have ever seen this before. It used to hang on, one, there was a big one that used to hang on the wall at Tuttle Middle School. Two thousand and eleven, we've been leaders across the state around building multi-tiered system of support, and we're really trying to improve that. We worked with people from Michigan to div, to define and do practice profiles for all of these pieces of the puzzle before the AOE was even looking at multi-tiered systems, because we knew we needed to do something to make sure that all our kids were, were meeting targets. So I, I, I believe that we're really trying to really improve the best we can on what we've been working on. If you look at this swirl, the highly quality, high-quality instruction intervention, the blue one, and expertise is kind of the, the place where the two components that we're currently focused on with the specialization that we've been talking about. All of the, but all of the pieces work together in the puzzle, you can't just pull, pull those out. You have to really realize that everything works together. It's the culture of continuous improvement and really looking at our data, looking at how we build the expertise, looking at how we're assessing, what kind of assessments we're doing, how we're working together, that's gonna allow us to really improve outcomes for kids. The work that we're doing, I know, it seems like these all, these are all separate initiatives around the universal design for learning, resiliency, the mindfulness, the anti-racism work that we're doing. All of that works together to create a safe learning environment where students can really engage. And they're not separate initiatives, they're really part of the system of supports. So I wanted to make sure you understood how everything works together in a comprehensive approach. So this is the what that we're doing. And probably you've seen this tiered triangle before. This originally came out when RTI started back in the early two thousands. When we have collaboration between educators, coaches, clinicians, special educators to really design the universal instruction, the targeted and intensive interventions, we're really gonna get the most bang for our buck. So using data to make some decisions about what needs to change in the classroom, that's why we really looked at putting in those resiliency practices for all classrooms. That's why we're building a universal design for learning for all students. And then really finding out what kids are still needing to have an extra dose, some supplemental, and providing that for them, either through a targeted, or for some kids, it has to be very intensive. It has to be a really intensive program. But the biggest part of the system is the bottom tier. It takes up the most room on the, on the, um, the tiered system of support. That's where we're really trying to really improve the most that we can for instruction.
You just, the percentages, can you, you didn't hit on the-
Um, they estimate that about eighty percent of students are gonna be successful just with the first-
Tier one.
First tier instruction. And then there's an estimate that about fifteen percent of kids might need to move into tier-two instruction. And then there's an estimate that about five percent are in tier-three instruction. And typically, we talk about tier-three being special education. And we're at about, actually, five to six percent for our special education population, so.
But the idea is that it's not a sentence to be in tier-two. The hope is, is that, you know, individuals that get targeted intervention will be able to dump back into and get caught up, so that then they're back into the, into the, into the pool. We recognize that intensive interventions, as Joanne said, they, they may continue to be able to need that. But the idea is that we wanna get all kids back into the environment in which they're most, most appropriate.
And those interventions don't have to happen in a separate place, they're not separate local- They're not separate locations. They could happen right in the classroom. It's really about having, designing these interventions that we know are based on the brain research and the research we know about instruction, and providing that level of supplemental instruction that allow, will allow kids to make that jump in progress, that rate of progress is gonna jump for them, so that they can, they can really be reading and having math skills that they need for the future. So, the, since the bottom piece is the biggest, that's good, you can go ahead. The bottom part of the triangle is the biggest part. I wanted to make sure you really understood about UDL. I think there's still a little bit of confusion about that. It's a framework that, again, it's endorsed by the ESS, Every Student Succeeds Act. It's considered best practice for teaching all students an inclusive learning environment. Remember, we have to prove that kids can't be educated in the classroom. We need to make sure that we're really trying to beat all the variables. Kids with disabilities, kids who might come from a different culture, kids who are re, or motivated in a different way than other people. I know my boys didn't really enjoy sometimes the way instruction was in, in schools. So, really being able to create an environment, design an instruction where all kids can really enter. And then building expert learners, like having it be purposeful and motivate, they're purposeful, they're really choosing what they need to do, becoming more of a, discovering what their dispositions for learning are, which is what we want them to do. Really learning how to regulate in the school, get, becoming resourceful and knowledgeable and getting skills, and also understanding their goals and being strategic. UDL helps to design a classroom where all of our learners are gonna become expert learners and know about themselves and learn to become proficient. Next one. And so, the thing about UDL is there is no average, and I think in the past, our classrooms have been designed for average. So, the average student went to the classroom and became successful. If you didn't have certain skills, then you were asked to be in special ed, or you were asked to do a thing a different, if you couldn't behave, then you went somewhere, you went to the principal's office. So, what we're finding is that, what we know is that there is no average student. Students have strengths and needs, and there's certain things that they're good at and certain things that they're not so good at, that they need to learn. And so, what we wanna do is we wanna design a classroom that can really teach, so kids can be aware of who they need and can really meet all those different variables. And teachers design based on those three networks. I think I've shared this with you in the past. Like, they need to provide multiple means of engagement. Why are we learning this? Why do I wanna learn this? How am I gonna be engaged? Multiple means of representation. What are we learning? Let's be clear on those standards. This is what you'll be learning. And then in multiple means of action and expression, how are you learning it? There might be a variety of ways that kids can really show us what they're learning to match with their learning style. So, that's what we're really trying to work on, on our, on our bottom tier, is a universally-designed classroom where kids, the barriers are being taken away for them, so they can really access the learning. So, this is the what. A systematic and comprehensive multi-tiered system of support approach with all of those things that we're working on. And as I said, we've been working on it since two thousand and eleven, and we're just really starting to make some significant changes that we think need to happen for our kids to make progress.
So, I've been charged for the last part here, so I'm gonna be just talking a little bit to the how. And this is also gonna, it's my intention to speak to some of the questions that came up about the continuous improvement plans, and then also plans that David has for next year to make sure that every school has a strong distributed leadership team called the Continuous Improvement Team. So, just something quickly about our goals. So, last year's continuous improvement plan was the first for the district. It was a new state requirement, and so that was created for the first time last year, and that had representatives from pretty much every stakeholder group, community members, students, parents, teachers, and that was also submitted to the board for approval. The goals are the same for all five schools and the district, so they're district-wide goals, but the strategies, as you know, change from building to building. So, these new goals are, the, the change that you see in the goals, these are multi-year goals. You see a change for twenty nineteen, twenty, because the state actually required your first goal needs to be academic proficiency and your second needs to be safe and healthy schools. So, within safe and healthy schools, we're thinking about our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. We're thinking about our socio-emotional learning. We're thinking about learning environments. You see MTSS, which wraps around UDL. But across all four of these goals, you know, there's a fair amount of overlap. For example, in, Joanne was just speaking to the importance of having really clear learning objectives, have an effective progress monitoring system. That brings us back to the proficiency work and vice versa. So, each of these goals, and it really comes through in the strategies, kind of overlap. So, right, so we're required to update and provide some documentation of progress towards these goals annually, but the plan isn't rewritten each year. So, the hope is to have multi-year goals, so that when teachers come back every August, it's not, it's not like, and now for something entirely different. It's not year by year by year. It's updated, the strategies are revised, and, and, but it's a multi-year approach is the idea. I wanted to just go back to the original definition that's available in the Education of the State's Educational Quality Standards. And you can see here, that top paragraph, they say that, you know, you could have a single plan for the whole district, or you could have, write separate plans for each building, which is what we have. However, we have the same goals with different strategies across the district, so that's consistent. Like I said, it's a multi-year plan. Also, in the second part here, where it says it's sort of like the overall plan for the district, that's true, but the, the caveat I would put on that is it's typically, it's true for grant requirements, it's true for state and federal requirements, it's good for our local initiatives and priorities, it's good towards, working towards our ends, but it doesn't, typically, it's not like a strategic plan. It doesn't include operations as much or at all, and same with capital improvements. So, that's, I just wanted to clarify that part from the second paragraph. And the last part, as you see, the plan needs to be developed with the involvement of school board members, students, teachers, administrators, parents, and other community members, which it was. And then it needs to be reviewed at least annually for effectiveness. And so, this spring, there were groups that met to, to review the plan, and I'm gonna speak to how we'd like to use it in a more recursive way next year, as per David's ideas. So, so really what we'd like to do, and this is at David's direction, some of the conversations around specialization kind of highlighted the fact that we need a distributed leadership team that meets more often in, in our schools. And so, the idea would be to have a continuous improvement team where the CIP is consulted regularly and is really a living document that is being, you know, revised and updated as we go at the strategy level, not at the goal level, and where we're really, it's really driving the work. And then, the idea is that, you know, with teachers being involved in this work, that was one of the things that kind of came out, is teachers felt like they weren't really part of the decision-making process enough with, with some of the, the school improvement work we're trying to do, notably in the, the area of MTSS. So, so there's that. There's also the idea that these could be really good teams to help engage parents and bring parents in. You know, it'd be our intention to bring parents in, you know, once or twice a year at minimum, to be talking, to be having these conversations, so that it's clear and the board, the, the full job of communicating these changes doesn't fall to the board and Superintendent Young. And, and finally, the, the other sort of responsibility of these teams, which would meet monthly, I think we would hope, would be to just sort of keep checking in, how are we doing, and looking at those four goals, which, like I said, overlap in a more continuous approach. So, yeah, so that's the, we're ready for your questions, and we wanted to kind of provide that, that update. Oh, sorry, there's more?
That's it.
Sorry. Wanted the, the why, what, and how. Leave that up there.
So, my obvious question is, nowhere in this presentation did I see the word specialization.
I can find it for you.
Actually, it was.
It's, if you look under, well, so you mentioned, Elizabeth, you mentioned content area specialization.
Yeah.
Here, it's listed under number three as content area expertise for professional development. Some of the conversations this spring, some of the feedback we're getting from teachers is, if, if we're gonna be specializing, we definitely want more preparation in content-specific.
But that's, that presumes that you're specializing. There's still no place in this presentation that explains why specialization was chosen as the way to do the improvement, or why we think that is going to, on balance, be better, because there are advantages and disadvantages to it, and it's still, the connection's not been made for all of us, nor for parents, nor for a lot of the teachers. I mean, I've been approached by a lot of teachers who have said, you're asking the same questions that we have in your meetings, and the, the dots aren't connected as to, okay, we have this problem, that one in five students are not meeting proficiency, we need to improve MTSS. The dot to why specialization is the way to do that is not clear, because what I've heard is you've said that teachers want more content area expertise, and I've heard from David, and fewer initiatives. But yet, it feels like I'm being told, well, the initiatives are all wrapped together and they're really important, and that's really what's getting kids ready. So, the initiatives are really important, and I've also not heard that it's, it's content in a specific area that people are asking for. I have not heard, at least not from David yet, maybe you can tell me something different, that people are asking to specialize in literacy or specialize in math. It's more, we wanna specialize in what we're teaching. Content total versus all these different initiatives that we're being asked to focus on, that are taking our attention. So, I'm just asking, you know, how we decided that specialization was the way to solve these problems.
You go back to the math, maybe the visual?
Yeah, I, I do think it's just going back to the multi-tiered system. And again, I'm not, I, to, to answer your question, teachers need to really understand how to teach literacy deeply and teach math deeply. We're not seeing that we can get, we have gotten teachers to that place yet. And they all have to know how to teach, they all have to know resiliency, they all have to implement PBIS, they all have to be anti-race racist. Everyone has to have that, all of us have to, even us. We all have to have that, that piece. So, that is a given. But in terms of teaching the content, if we could take that pressure off teachers and really say, you're gonna be an, an expert in literacy and really be good at this, and teach the literacy, and you're gonna be an expert in ma, in math, maybe not expert, but you're gonna have highly, you're gonna be highly skilled in that, that's the reason why we're really looking at this, is to really deeply get them trained and not have them have to do, to focus on two things at once. We want that, to have this high-quality instruction and intervention. We don't have that, we don't really, we haven't hit that mark yet. We really haven't hit it.
The vans are this, and the high-quality instruction.
So, that's the reason why.
I kinda, you know, I, I had this conversation with David after sitting through one session, and my, my feeling is it's almost like we're speaking a different language in terms of explaining this. Like, if, if you go back to the puzzle piece chart, in, when this was done, was specialization contemplated anywhere here? I can't really see it enough to see if it has.
Well, we were looking at this, the research and evidence-based instruction and interventions, and we never got there. So, we haven't really done a lot of work and instruction on this. I think what we've done is we've relied on special educators to do their special education intensive instruction, and even some of our special educators don't even have, don't even have deep knowledge in certain areas.
Well, and, and that's a good example where, if you were to ask me again, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't even pretend to be...
Yep.
In the field you're in, but when you say, research, evidence-based instruction and intervention...
Yep.
I hear kids learn best, you know, with this neuro, neuroscience-based...
The universal design for learning?
Right. And I hear regulation, I hear disposition for learning, and I hear taking barriers away. And, and sort of what I'm hearing is, it's the how, it's that high-quality instruction is how, not the what. And that's, that's a disconnect for me, is do we get to the high-quality instruction and vent, and intervention through a how, which is the understanding, helping kids regulate, sort of eliminating the barriers to learning...
That's part of it.
Versus...
That's part of it.
This deep dive on content.
Yeah.
And I, it, it sounds like a...
It's both, and, yeah.
Just as, from like a curriculum standpoint, I just wanna go back to something that Bridget said, is this is not a shift, there's not a, there's not an abandonment. We really want you to know, there's, we're not turning away from the socio-emotional work that we, that's been so crucial. And so, and we need to make sure that it's really embedded in our work in a way that's consistent across classrooms. And so, we do have work ahead, sort of making sure that we have school-wide language, or ideally, district-wide language, when it comes to classroom routines, when it comes to socio-emotional learning, when it comes to, whether it's the peace corner or the centering spot, or like, when student, student, we have really different disparate, still disparate practices and different language around that. And sometimes a team will have shared language. So, that's, that brings us back to the, the system thing. So, that's the first thing I wanna say, is we're not moving away from that. But what we are finding, if I can go back to the, the pyramid, is this universal design for learning is about multiple options and multiple approaches. And so, you're right, it is, it is the, the how, but it's also the what itself. And so, so for example, one thing that we're finding is after, you know, I think, when, when I went to school, the teacher taught one way, and if you didn't get it that way, tough beans for you. And now, we realize that, that just doesn't work. We're here for all of our students, and so, the ask of teachers, I think, is greater to say, you, you don't just have to know how to teach math, going back to like your, maybe your highly qualified status question, Elizabeth, you need to be able to teach math like five different ways. And that depth of knowledge, I think, is, is one thing that we're up against. And so, I help with the planning of professional development, and we were, in the first part of the year, hearing things about, and we, actually, that, that is a sustained trend in the feedback data, the exit cards we're getting from teachers, saying, when we do resiliency and then we don't see it for six weeks, it feels like a pinprick approach, and we'd really like to go deeper on, on things. Now, at this point, you know, given the controversy around specialization, and I don't, you know, I think we're here to say that we're not trying to barrel ahead with specialization. We, we're thinking like, let's, let's bring people together and talk about this. We also, we're, specialization is not the ultimate goal. That's one piece, one strategy, if you will, in part of a broader thing. That's the message that I think Joanne is really trying to emphasize tonight. But if, if you think about, you know, the TLC time that the board has generously approved, it's really making a difference in the area of professional development, that adds up to a twenty hours, twenty-two hours over the course of the year. And if I take a three-credit college course, it's like forty-five hours. Now, when I take a college course as a professional, that's probably gonna teach me some stuff, and I'll, I'll probably use it in my craft, but one college course is not gonna like transform me as an educator, right? I think we would all agree that. Even like a cycle of courses, or even a new degree, may or may not like transform me as an educator. So, compared that to like the twenty-two hours that we have to work with, with this TLC time, it's like, something like half a, a college course. Now, if we take that and divide it into four or five things, it's, it's hard to ever think that we could get to this level of expertise that Joanne was talking about. So, that's one of the things that we're, we're talking about, as well as really trying to intentionally build more shared practices, which we're always trying to do, and it's always really hard, because, because of a long tradition of teachers, you know, you close the door to your classroom and you, you teach your, your class. And the research around collective, teacher collective efficacy from the Hattie research shows it's like the number one thing that makes a difference for teachers, for students, excuse me, is when teachers are working together in a systemic way, kind of like Joanne was describing. So, anyway, couple of, couple of additional considerations around sort of depth and breadth, and we're not trying to throw out the great work that's, that's ongoing in the district around socio-emotional learning. It's just we're finding that on the, this, this being able to reteach and the depth of knowledge is, as opposed to like following a math program. And you'll recall in the fall, like when we were looking at the scores, our smarter balance scores, that are overall trending downward or flatlining, and not, the achievement gap is not going away with our, with our historically disadvantaged students. And I remember, maybe it was you, Elizabeth, that said, isn't that the year we start doing bridges? And it was. And so, and I'm not here to like disparage bridges, but what we're finding is that we need people, we need our teachers to have confidence, content area confidence, that goes beyond like a, a program. So that you're not kind of following a scope and sequence. You're able to, you know the scope and sequence, but now you're able to reteach and do these targeted interventions, sometimes even in class, in small groups. And so there's some exciting work going on there for the All Learners Project, a math group, where, uh, we have math menu. And so a lot of our elementary teachers are actually really excited about that work. We're not taught, we, they probably won't call you up and tell you they're excited, but there actually is some, some positive momentum there. So, uh, I'm not here to say like, you know, that's, uh, we have to do specialization. It's, it, it, it's one part, um, it's one part of a, of broader work. And the question that, that we have, really, we're, we're trying to be, I, I do struggle from a professional development standpoint, to try to get to a place of something that's impactful. And when I look at like twenty hours for the year, when we start dividing that into several things, as you mentioned, Bridgette, it starts to feel like pinpricks.
Yeah.
I guess I still feel like I haven't heard the argument for content area specialization. If you're having trouble reaching kids, isn't it just as likely that it's because you don't know enough about different learners, or enough about special education, or enough about trauma-informed teaching, as opposed to math or literacy? That's why you're having trouble reaching the kids. And in fact, that was the one exemplar district that they cited in the DMG report, was when they had a special educator train up the general education classroom teachers. There was nothing about specialization. It was about reaching your regular general classroom teachers where they are, and helping them to reach these children, not through deeper content knowledge, but through an ability to reach learners by understanding how they learn, what kind of learners they are, how they self-regulate. To me, that doesn't say anything about math or literacy or anything else.
Sure. Well, that, so that, like you mentioned, that's like one, one district in that, in that study. Really important influential study. It's one that we refer to often. Um, and I, I have, we have to agree. That's why we've been doing so much work in the area of universal design for learning. That's exa- what you're talking about is exactly what we're going for. And also, in my professional experience, and this is not specific to South Burlington, have come up against the challenge of, uh, elementary school teachers being experts in all discipline areas, in next-gen science, in common core math, and in common core ELA. It's a different, it's a different set of expectations and depth of expectations than, um, than when I went to school, for sure. And, um, and I don't, I, you know, I, I mean that in, I mean, I mean that with humility. And that is not about, uh, that's not disparaging towards elementary teachers. It's from a place of empathy, like, how could anybody be experts in these deep frameworks? And not just experts in these frameworks, but being able to sort of do the reteaching and instructional shifts. And so I'll just share from my professional experience, Brian, that I have seen, uh, folks that, that run up against the edges of their comfort level in math, for example. And so there actually would be, uh, great advantage to having a cohort of teachers working together, learning from each other, and able to specialize in math.
But then, yeah, I think we would love to see, uh, go ahead.
No, I'm go, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
But then I think we would love to see the research that supports that, because none of what I'm hearing or that I've read, and we've only had the DMG report and nothing else, which is why I refer to it,
Yep.
speaks about content-level specialization.
Right.
It talks about a special educator helping general classroom teachers do their thing.
Right.
And there, there really isn't a whole lot of research. It's new. I mean, it's like what, what we're, what we've discovered, there's a, there's a couple of school districts in Vermont that have gone this way, and they really have closed, closed the achievement gap. We also have seen it in Massachusetts, where they're really looking at statewide, really looking at intervening in this way, and having more content specialists this way at the elementary, not the really young grades, but the upper elementary grades. So I think people, I think the iteration of the historical iteration of this multi-tiered system, I think this is the next place where people are seeing we need to really get stronger at in order to get those outcomes to change. I don't know the district that you're talking about in the study, whether that, that achievement gap closed for kids, if that's what they were saying, or whether they had better outcomes for all kids, or what the results of theirs wa- were.
I would have to see it again. It was large.
I, I, I agree with you. I think that the, the collaboration between special educators and classroom teachers really improves the quality of that tier one, the classroom instruction where all kids can access. I don't think it really improves the, the rate of learning in, in academic areas. That's what we've seen in, in the, with the school districts that we've talked to and learned about. And again, there's not any research on that, but the things that we're trying to do around high-quality instruction, teacher efficacy, group, you know, working together, those are all things that Hattie has researched its effect with. There's not, it's not like, it's a researched instructional strategy that like a, a medical doctor does. But we're really trying to find something that we can really close that gap. And this is something that we, that the principals and Mike and I have really looked at, and really would like to try and implement. But yet, we've had to really think about that in terms of how we communicated, how we talked with parents and t- teachers about it. We didn't really get that input. That's why David has really asked us to slow down, to really use the continuous improvement teams. And we're going to start with the instruction. We're going to bring in the instruction for teachers and ask them to start to, to mess around with this, and we'll see where that goes. So as Mike said, we're not trying to push this specialization. What we're trying to push is a system that's going to affect kids. And we, I think, I believe, and maybe Mike, you're going to re- agree with me, that this specialization could be a way that it could really be effective. And that's one of the reasons, by working with the elementary principals, we felt like it was a good model to move forward with. It's not research-based, there's not any studies about it. But it makes sense in terms of the research we know about learning, and the historical evolution of how multi-tiered systems have been going, and the, the way that the, the things around RTI have been researched over the years. So, and I, it's a change. It is, you know, uh, the school looks the same as when I was there, when you were there. And it's different with scary, that if we're going to change that a little bit, I get that. It's scary for teachers, it's scary for parents. And, and I believe it will be better if we do something like that. But we're, we slowed it down. And we're going to start with the education first, the training first, and get teachers engaged in the learning, and then we'll move from there.
Well, and maybe these continuous improvement teams, if they are in fact going to meet with parents once or twice a year anyway, maybe in August, I mean, people may snooze on this for a little while, but they were, they were up in arms.
Yeah, and I understand. It's a big change. It's a big change. And there's some, there's some fear in terms of, especially, um, may the parents that, that come are the parents where kids are successful.
Sure.
So they, they don't see the reason to make the change. Um, we don't often hear from some of those marginalized groups in those kind of forums. So we're, um, you know, we have to advocate for all students. So I want to make sure that we're
Well, as do we. We just want to make sure it's the right direction.
Yeah, yeah. As do we. And I think that we've, we've done sort of the due diligence around looking where things are working and making some plans to do it. And you're questioning that. And so we've slowed down. But we're still, this is still the plan, is to implement these, this multi-tiered system. Maybe specialization doesn't go as we had thought about it from the very beginning.
Could be varied, varied.
Could be varied.
Different grades, different schools.
I think the other thing, sort of in the controversy that got lost, is the work that, that Joanne and I were studying and working on this year with the elementary principals, that again, was not, you know, it wasn't spread. The work wasn't spread out enough through distributed leadership teams, and through parent communications that were ongoing. And so it kind of just landed like a big, you know, kind of like a, like a rock hitting the water there. But I, I'd just like to take a second to highlight some of the other things. Some of the other, um, areas where we don't think we're really in line with an MTSS framework yet, is, for example, we don't have consistent intervention blocks. So when you think about that targeted intervention, so too often, and the DMG talks about that, that's coming at the expense of first instruction. So you're getting tier two instead of tier one. That's not MTSS.
Leave the classroom.
Which is against the law.
Leave the classroom and go get
Which is kind of against the federal and state guidance around what MTSS is. So we are not, we're not in compliance with that. So that's one thing, when we think about like intervention blocks. So there was master schedule work that was really hard, also very controversial and tough. It's always hard when you revise the schedule. It's always tough when you, uh, review teacher assignments as well with principals. But, um, so that was also another thing that was ongoing. Uh, looking at like, what's a balanced literacy block to ensure consistency across schools? Um, and what's a balanced math block? And the way math is being taught in the district right now is really, there's high variability. The way, if you were to walk into different math classes, it looks very different. Both from the instructional time, as well as the, the how, like, uh, we're talking about. So like I mentioned, that sort of pocket of that cohort, of growing cohort of Vermont Math Institute, uh, teachers, we have several in the district. Um, and so a lot of them are really, uh, bring a lot of expertise to bear that is maybe underutilized, when you think about it. The other thing that's going on right now, as I mentioned, is the All Learners Project. It has like math menu with sort of like, uh, sort of a differentiated approach at the end of a, the lesson. There's a mini lesson, there's a strong emphasis, uh, emphasis on application to go deeper into math language, um, and to get past sort of this procedural approach to math. So there, there's some exciting pockets that aren't sys- sys-, you know, it's not a systemic approach yet. So those are some of the other things that we are looking at and working on, and kind of specialization, the specialization conversation kind of ate all those other, all those other considerations. So I, I just want to emphasize to the board that there are, there are other things that we're working on. Specialization is just one piece of the puzzle. And, um, and you know, there's not a lot of research on specialization per se. And I think it's going to be up to the board and our superintendent to decide, and, and our community to decide, do we want to still be leaders in this work? So the people will be researching us as we move forward. If we have good local evidence that this is the right thing to do, given the other pieces of the puzzle.
Right.
Or do we want to wait and see until, you know, there's a, you know, peer-reviewed research out there that we can draw on? But whether it's the, the Hattie research, again, that's widely referenced, response to intervention, very effective. So if we can get closer to that approach in fidelity, um, collective teacher efficacy, so some of these consistency things, common language, uh, common practices across buildings, um, and across classrooms, if we can strengthen that, there's a strong research base for that. And teacher beliefs about learner potential is also really, really high in these mega-studies from John Hattie. They're, they're actually meta-studies, so they're studies of studies. Um, so there's a lot of, of evidence for them. So those are three practices that aren't specialization, you know, specific to specialization. But they are, um, they do bolster and kind of back up the, the general work that we're trying to do to get this system in place. And specialization maybe will be part of that, maybe not.
The, you know, as I, as I listen to this, you know, some of the things that are outstanding to me are, is the model appropriate for every age level?
Hmm.
And I think that's some of what we were hearing from a concern standpoint.
Yep.
I hear that there's still a lot of variability around current practices and opportunities to collaborate now. So, uh, you know, part of me is left thinking, would we get an equal benefit shorter term of sort of getting everybody up to a sta- that standard bar and common practices that you're referencing, Mike?
Yeah.
On, on the practices of resiliency and so forth?
Yep.
That might result in improved outcomes that does have more research associated with it. But, you know, I, I think the reality is, we, there, there's also some collateral impacts of specialization that, that I know as a board member, I don't understand. Like, for instance, if you all of a sudden have specialty teachers in, from a content standpoint at every elementary school, what does that mean for staffing? What does it mean for, you know, having the, the right trained resources? And, and it does sound like, um, even a more complicated process than you described the scheduling process from a, from a personnel and staffing standpoint. But, you know, I, I appreciate this description. I think I have a little better understanding. But I also think there's, there's a lot of questions that kind of come to mind for me around, the expectation that this was a intensive research-based, you know, um, choice versus something that was innovative and in concert with a lot of other, um, initiatives within MTSS, and, and understanding that. Other questions or comments?
I still just don't feel like the question that a lot of parents have asked, and that I've asked a couple of times, has been addressed, which is, there's a trade-off. There's a clear trade-off between specialization and a teacher who understands the whole child. Teachers learn things about children that they're not going to see if they're only teaching one content area. And we've heard from teachers that are also parents, or somehow related to, you know, from outside of district, have said, and other professionals, like psychiatrists and pediatricians and people like that, who have said, you know, great, that people will have more content area, but I, for example, as a fourth-grade teacher in another district, if I have a kid who's struggling with math, they may be spectacular in literacy, or science, or some other thing. And I can see where their strengths and weaknesses are in that other area, and use that to bolster my teaching of that specific child. Now, that works if you have a classroom of fifteen or twenty kids. That doesn't work if you're trying to do sixty different learners, and you're only seeing them a little bit of the day, and they're rotating through. Um, that is a concern. And there is, there is, with specialization, I think specialization, it, it feels like from what I'm hearing, in your mind, is just one of a number of interventions. From the perspective of some of the teachers who I've talked to, and some of the parents, it represents a, a drastic change to the way a child's day looks, and what their experience of school is. And I think that's being dismissed a little bit. It feels dismissed to the parents who have not really had that question answered. It feels dismissed to me. I don't think it's only parents who have successful kids that we've heard from.
Okay.
I, I heard a lot in the meetings that we've had, and in the emails that we've had, from kids who are on IEPs, from kids who are having challenges accessing school right now, who are pretty fragile emotionally. And those are the parents I've heard the most from, frankly, who have said, "No way, no how, that would be so stressful for my child to walk into that situation every day." And not really, especially at the younger levels, where, you know, the teacher is almost like mom, or dad, you know, until they get to a certain stage where they're sort of taking over their own emotional regulation. Uh, just as an anecdote out of one of the many that I've heard, but, you know, for example, I heard from a mom who says, "I get a call every single day from the school that there is a sub in the class." Because my son can regulate when the regular classroom teacher is there, who he's comfortable with, and who knows the routine, and, and, and he has a deep relationship with. When it's somebody else, even if it's a sub that they've had a number of times, not so much. And his behavior gets out of control, and he has trouble accessing his learning. So I don't, I, I'm really concerned by the dismissiveness of, you know, this is just parents who are happy with the way things are working for their kids, and they're worried that that's going to change. I, I've heard some very deep concerns from, from parents who don't see it quite working yet, who are very concerned about what specialization means, especially for the younger grade levels. So, a- a- and I'm also just a little bit concerned, because I've, I've heard in a couple instances that this is a communication problem, or a rollout problem. And I, from a parent perspective or community perspective, that sort of feels like we just need to repackage it differently to sell it to you, as opposed to, we're looking deeply at these concerns that you have, and we will address those concerns, or take them into account. It really does, in a couple of instances, feel like, that's what I've heard, that, you know, we're slowing it down, but it's still going to happen. Or we're, we're, we're considering, you know, how to communicate better. When a lot of people are just concerned about the initiative period. And so, yeah, I just feel like there's, there's a, there's a decent amount of work to be done if, if people are going to be able to connect those dots and feel comfortable with this. Because, for example, there are a number of smaller initiatives that have sort of happened, and they've never kind of heard the outcome of, and then we go away from them and do something else. The one that comes to mind is the No Homework Initiative. So there was some research, there was some initiative, there was some innovation, there was some, hey, let's not do homework at the elementary level anymore. And then we never, as a board, at least, I don't recall, maybe I missed it, but I never really heard sort of report on how that was working or not working. And then I see, as a parent, the homework is kind of prepped back in. And it's, it's, it's mellower than it might have been in previous years. But it's there, for sure. You know, there's, there's homework, and it's framed as optional. But if you don't do it, then you're sort of falling behind a little bit, perhaps. Or, or the teacher can't quite assess you in the way she can assess other kids. So it's, I just get concerned when there's something that's a little deeper, even than the no homework thing, that's going to really change the way a day looks for kids. Um, that I just want to make sure that, um, innovation is great, and I encourage it. If we really, if, if there's a real thought-out reason for why we're going in a specific direction, I just, I'm just struggling with, with why we've chosen to go that way.
I really, I really appreciate your candor.
Yeah.
And, um, and I'm glad you brought that up, so that I can say that we are super whole-child advocates.
Right.
And, um,
This is confusing to me, because it feels like this goes away from everything Joanne has said in other, in other years that I've been on the board.
What we've heard from teachers who have implemented this is it has the opposite effect for kids. That's what we've heard with teachers we've interviewed. Um, so I feel like that, that we need to get connected with some of the people who have implemented this before. Because, yeah.
What we've been, what we've done historically, is the students who often struggle with a con- What we've been, what we've done historically is the students who often struggle with a content area, we actually have more transitions and we introduced more, um, you know, other human beings to them for areas, right? We ask them out of the classroom, they miss tier one. We ask them out of the classroom, they're generally with very caring individuals, but they're not getting. So they have a miss, they have an exposure to other, other individuals, other environments. And again, this is an area that when we look at all kids, and again, our, my, my goal to you is outcomes for all students, right? All students will be ready for their next step. And we know currently, we do well, but we have some pretty significant identified gaps in our data. And we look to our practice for that example that I just shared. And we're trying to be more mindful around making sure that students are accessing good tier one instruction from their classroom teacher, not being asked to leave. Those three or four students aren't go- going out, right? We recognize that that's detrimental to your point because of those exposures to out, going out and not being within. And so we, we do have a lot of that going on. We definitely recognize the importance of relationship development. We are, we're pretty fortunate that we have, you know, our art and our physical education and our music expertise. Those are important relationships to our kindergartners and fifth graders. But we also recognize the importance of that, that critical content at a time when there's a struggle. Many of us have come through systems where we've said, I'm pretty good in this, I'm not so good in this. Well, the not so good in this generally is representative of getting feedback along the way that I just didn't get it. I just didn't get the concept, the way in which it was taught. Had I had a different objective, different opportunity in my classroom to work on the geometric principle, to actually touch it and see it, I think I would've got it far better than trying to understand, you know, the theorem on the board. So again, tha- that level of, of, of kind of recognition and expertise is, is one of the areas that I think we're trying to, trying to get at. And again, I think, again, this is, we're, we're, we really want to, I want to say, this is important, right? This is important for us to take away and listen. We have important work to do, but it's not because we don't care. We have, we want to make sure that we're making continual gains for all kids. And, and from the kids that have been marginalized to the kids that need to climb high. And we, we really think we can do a better job.
Do you have time for one more comment? I know you, kind of, this has been a long conversation. I just wanted to, to get back, I just wanted to speak to, I really appreciate Bridget's comments. And, um, and so I wanted to say, you know, we are definitely, we're not going to do anything that puts at risk the relationships of, of students and their wellbeing and, and the strong social emotional approach. That's something that's been great work in this district. It's something that I think that's part of why I got hired in this district is because of some of my work in that area. And, uh, so we are, I, I want the board and the community to hear that we are not going to move away from that. And then the other thing too is, uh, we want you to know that we don't see this as a rollout problem or like a packaging problem. We see it as a distributed leadership challenge. And so we really do have to do a better job of having teachers be part of the design process along the way. And, uh, and in my professional experience, I've never seen, uh, initiatives that's successful when all the teachers hate it. So I think that's a, you know, I think that is a deal breaker. So I think, um, we need to, to keep the conversations going. Again, Joanne and I see this as one part of a bigger conversation. Um, and we need to be, we've heard the board say we need to be much more thoughtful in our approach and to slow down and to bring people in to that decision-making process and also the, the rationale so that people are, are, you know, looking at what are our different options and how could we best move forward?
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you, board.
All right, we will move on to Agenda Eight. We're a little behind. See if we can get caught up. Approval of CIP plans for individual schools and the school district.
Yeah, that'd be good. So the CIP, so the CIP plan you've had, again, feels to me a little rushed for you. I'm just wanting to be crystal clear. There's been a lot of work for us to, to, to pull this together and work collaboratively within the schools, within, with the principals and district-wide. Um, I think there's ample time for a continued review from you and input. We do need signatures tonight in order to be able to be eligible for federal grant dollars. Um, again, I think a lot of our colleagues are struggling with this currently at the present time, but it is an important component. Uh, that said, I think there's some important pieces. We highlighted on some of those, those earlier, Mike and Joanne did. But again, I don't know, is there anything specific you'd like to give them?
I just wanted to add to the board that we're, we're going flat out right now. Mike and I are working overtime to get our federal grant in and approved and, uh, you know, curriculum camp is going on and the end of the year wrap-up stuff. So we're, we're going on all cylinders right now. And I just wanted the board to know that, um, I just haven't had the time to incorporate the feedback and suggested edits from, from your last meeting, but that's something that we're going to do and that I'll share back. And I also got the message that, um, that it would be great if the board could click through to the supporting documents that are evidence of some of the work we've been doing. So I just want the board to know that, um, that is, is at our earliest convenience, definitely this summer, um, we'll do that. And that it, I don't expect it will go this way next year. Uh, similar to our finance colleagues, um, we were in a holding pattern for a lot of the year to find out what are the insurances that we need to provide towards progress of continuous improvement. And, um, and then, like I said, the state also said, oh, please change these goals. So there was a little bit of catching some curveballs this spring. And I think that the lack of polish on those reports, six of them, um, reflects that, reflects a process that's not, not what we're going for next year. So next year, we're hoping that a continuous improvement team will be looking at that document and be doing live, uh, updates and thinking about it and making it a living document. And then when we get to the end of the year, it won't be like a compliance exercise in feeling this rushed, but will be hopefully a natural extension of the work that's taking place over the course of the year. So I just wanted the board to know that we are going to follow up and provide that back to you.
Yeah, and again, that, that, those, those edits and modifications are absolutely appropriate, right? That, that happens. A lot of our federal grant modifications and changes can happen, uh, real time. So it's not, that's not the intent, that once you send them in, you can't ever change them.
Right.
Yeah.
Till the short of that, it's not called CIP for nothing.
Yeah, exactly.
Continuous.
Good one. Yeah. Okay.
So you have a motion from one of us too. So I move that we approve the continuous improvement plans for the five individual schools and for the school districts for the 2019, 2020 school year.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, Master Planning and Visioning.
So we've talked a lot about this already. Um, I don't want to try to create a perfect summary. We have an upcoming working session. I'm hopeful that you know about the 26th, I think.
Yes, Wednesday, Wednesday mornings, every other Wednesday morning at this stage. So welcome.
Yeah. So, uh, we have a, we have a, a working meeting, as I said, on the 26th. What we do know is that Gary and I have met with Doran Whittier, short meeting, but we know that there's some framing that needs to now happen for all the next steps. So at the working meeting, we'll be talking about, uh, what we call a user group meeting. We'll have representation of our, our district and our community, um, that will help advise, inform and support the work that Doran Whittier will be doing. We have a whole litany of communication pieces that need to get addressed. We have a funding arm that needs to get addressed and looked at and evaluated. So we have these, what I'm going to say, big buckets of things that need to get, get handled. But i- in the, in short, we're currently at Option Eight with the, the motion that was made by the board for some modification potential for, um, the, the option on just updating the middle school. Um, we're moving forward, again, the working session, I think, will help frame a little bit more, with more clarity on where we go from here. Um, we're watchful and concerned of resources that might be needed, including resources of the board and kind of how we continue to move forward in, in that role. So, um, we'll be looking at all of that. So I don't know, Gary, anything else that you'd like to add on MPV stuff? I'm not trying to add more time, but any, any other?
I'm just doing something for Mike, uh, sorry. No, I guess not.
Great. Bridget, anything else from your perspective?
No, um, I would just say that, um, from a board perspective, um, Brian's been doing a great job of coming to meetings and things. We do need to, as a board, make sure that there are two of us at least on, on this working group or in the, in the, in the user group at least.
Mm-hmm.
My concern being
Ones.
That I'm up for reelection in the spring and we will be in the middle of
Right.
all of this work at that stage. And I can't be the only person who is fully steeped in it, just in case. Um, and we just need to make sure that there's, there's a good way of
Cont continuity there.
to the board is, is deeply ingrained in that work.
The only other thing I would say is we did at the steering committee, I didn't, we did talk about the master planning and visioning. We think this is a pretty important conversation that's not just school only, but citywide. And I think this city council at least heard, heard where we were and offered some reflections. But, um, again, important to, to where we are.
So Bridget, you're saying this is every other Wednesday starting the 26th?
Every other Wednesday, starting the 26th.
These are our working group meetings?
Yeah.
And we'll talk about what the, the user group meeting and the frequency. I don't, the user group meetings will not be as frequent as the working group meetings. And, and the group will be a lot bigger and it will be, you know, there's going to be, it will be a much more, uh, agenda-driven, you know, conversation there. And that may be where we can divide, you know, a little bit if needed, if need be.
Well, and, and then is the second meeting going to be on the ninth before fact-finding? That was the next question.
The, the working group meeting?
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't totally mapped those out. I, I, you did?
I did map them out and I think.
So the ninth is one as well? So that's a nine o'clock in the morning? So we probably ought to look at revising that one with Doran Whittier because there's going to be, there's potentially a lot of us that might not be able to be there.
Yeah.
I'm out next week, but I'm happy to jump in after that, yeah.
Great.
I do have one, one update. We are, um, next week, we are going to have a, a telephone meeting with Jessica Cameron from, uh, PFM Financial Advisors. And she's going to give us a primer on standalone school debt. Very experienced consultant that worked with the district and is working with the city of Burlington. Um, so we did set up a meeting to, to, uh, get the financial advice and analysis started. This person is a freebie, um, you know, and it will kind of give us a, give us a sense of, um, what kind of services they provide. It's someone that Jon Stewart has worked with in the past and thinks extremely highly of. So it's already a, a good point.
When is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, I might, um, suggest if there's a number of those kinds of meetings that you or Gary or anybody wants some board representation at, we sort of start getting those out in the form of an email. Obviously, if it's more than two, it would have to be worn, but it might help, um, to understand if somebody has some spare time and can serve as a board representative, even to listen in, to move the process along.
Yeah, that's good.
Great. All right, we'll move on to Nine A, Negotiations Update. Um, just a couple of things here. Um, we do have fact-finding scheduled for July ninth, starting at 10:00 a.m., um, here at the middle school, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, uh, at the June sixth meeting, um, a number of representatives from the SBA and one of the co-presidents, Noah Everett, did make a statement to the board that, um, on behalf of the board, I responded back to. And I did want to, um, clarify that for those folks who might've at least been here or, um, watched the taping of that, um, that I was seeking some clarification and also, um, highlighting that if I understood the comments that were made and the two letters that were received, um, that it looked like the current position of the SBA was that conclusion of negotiations between the district and the union for a contract for FY 2020 were linked to the conclusion of negotiations being conducted for statewide health insurance benefits, um, which is a, a separate Act 11 for FY 2021 in later years. Um, and specifically, um, it was indicated that the SBA would not make a final decision to take a strike vote on the terms of a contract for FY 2020 until after the outcome of those statewide negotiations are known. So I, I really wanted to clarify on behalf of the board that, um, the statewide process is really running parallel, um, to, not parallel, actually, um, subsequent to this current bargaining year. The year that the board and the association are currently negotiating, um, working conditions and wages and benefits really is the year that ends, that starts, uh, July one and ends June 30th of next year. And the, um, Act 11 really calls for a statewide healthcare benefit being, um, implemented by July one of next year. So it is subsequent to the current contract period. And it is not likely that the terms of that would be known until December. So given, given the board's goal and consistent goal that we, uh, work to have a contract in place before the start of the school year, that would be incongruent with that. Um, so we, we really wanted to highlight that we did not see any connection in that. Right now, with fact-finding scheduled July ninth, which is a date that is almost two months later than contemplated by the current contract, um, that goal of having a, a contract in place before the start of the school year, um, seems beyond reach. However, if we can get the fact-finding report delivered by the end of the August, we might have the opportunity to reach a final agreement well before, um, the issuance of any, um, Act 11, the, the results of any Act 11 negotiations. So, um, I really wanted to clarify that for the record and we did that in writing with the association. Um, the, the current terms that are in place, just to clarify again, um, the, the board has, uh, wages and healthcare benefits that total 3.1%, total new money. And the union right now has wages and healthcare benefits that total 5.4% total new money, um, following mediation, I believe. And that excludes any other incremental costs that might be associated with new FTEs, impact on the co-curricular schedule and so forth. Um, so that's the gap in the major items at this point, um, that we're going into fact-finding with on the ninth. Um, there has also been a public information request, for a public information request from the union to the district offices for, um, expenses associated with the consultants on master planning and visioning, inclusive of stormwater, uh, engineering, as well as legal and negotiation consultant invoices, which, have those been responded to at this point? Okay. Um, so, uh, that is where we stand right now. Any further updates on that from anybody? All right. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Ten, District.
Did you do something?
Oh, sorry.
I did, if we could, uh, just back up to the MPV for Brian and Bridget, that meeting is scheduled on the 10th.
The 10th, I looked at the calendar, that's what I was looking at my phone for a second. Yes, it's on the 10th because that's the Wednesday, yeah.
Not tonight, it's on the 10th.
Good.
10 to 10 o'clock.
Strategic. Ahead of it. Thanks, Gary.
All right. Ten, District Policy Review on Policy D4 Drug and Alcohol Testing of Transportation Employees. This is a second reading?
Yep. Pretty simple modification. I'd recommend if you're okay with it, we just will move it to, um, an action for next meeting. And that next meeting would be not the 10th, it would be their first regularly, next regularly scheduled meeting after the 10th because the 10th is not
A full board meeting.
Full board meeting. Unless you want to.
Would you not want to do this?
No, I, I'd like to, but I, I mean, I'm trying to be mindful of the other items that would get added because I know on this, potentially on the 10th, we might have to add city stuff.
I think this is like a five-minute thing.
Easy, fine. Well, I only get five minutes, but it's probably shorter.
And I, I'm not sure if the 10th will, will be able to cover the city thing in a
No, I, I agree. I'm holding that as a ten.
I would add it on the 10th.
Okay, good.
Let's get something off the list.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, setting the agenda for July 10th. Agenda Item 11, I think we covered a little bit of that already. So we'll add that.
Yeah, I just, I just put a note here on placeholder, depending on what happens with the city, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have to really validate. I think we're going to have some phone participation in that meeting. So the, I wouldn't, depending on what information we get that needs, uh, feedback or that might need feedback in that timeframe, I think we have to look at this venue being the right, the right venue for it.
It may be that we recognize that we're in receipt of it. We have to maybe talk about a time to set for, you know, further review and recommendations.
I think it's fine to have it as a placeholder. And it's, it's as much yours and Gary's time as anybody, so. All right, move on to future agenda items.
I still haven't done anything with those.
Oh, sorry. I think that we were just talking about that.
Yep, we did.
All the way, okay, okay.
It's mostly, mostly hires is what it was initially set to be.
Yeah.
Right.
The current clause in the, in the contract, as anyone who signs after July fifteenth, it's a one year. So there was some, there's always been a desire by board to at least hold, if, if there are individuals in the queue that would be hired, then we would try to satisfy that requirement and not drag them to the August.
My only question in terms of, do we want a brief negotiations update since fact finding will have been the day before?
Yeah, I, I added, I added that too with question mark.
Okay.
Update on negotiations in the spirit of what I heard earlier. I just, we'll keep it on there. But, yeah. It's fine, I'll add it.
Good. All right, now on to future agenda items.
Yeah, I haven't done still the things I said I would do around looking at where those might fit in policy work.
Okay, we'll put that back in your court then.
Yeah, back in my court.
All right, agenda item thirteen, we need to consider the minutes of the June third, sixth and tenth meetings.
The third and the tenth, I had no changes to because they are essentially just executive session, planning meetings. And it's just who was there and who was not. And I thought those were okay. On the sixth, we need to do something different with the master planning and visioning discussion.
June sixth?
June sixth, our last regular board meeting. The master plan and visioning discussion was quite nuanced and, and pretty in-depth. We've got only a couple bullet points under each person's name that don't capture all of the back and forth discussion. And if you were to just read these bullet points, you would say, how did they unanimously agree to move forward with option eight? It doesn't make any sense. So we either need to decide that we're going to put all the nuance in there and go deeply into it, or I think we need to cut back and say the board had a robust discussion. Here were, instead of trying to group it under everybody's name, here were some of the cons.
Considerations.
Considerations. And here was the motion that was passed. Because I think this format just.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard.
It's going to be confusing for people who were not at the meeting or who don't take the time to go watch the tape.
Yeah, I had the same thing, but I would, I would actually include the link to the segment and kind of reference the tape and the timeframe that the discussion started. So that there's a reference to for, for the full detailed discussion.
They can watch it.
Where you can find it.
Yeah.
But would you, would you rather shorten it up then and just say robust conversation?
Yes, I would rather shorten it up and link to the video and let people go watch the detailed conversation because I think it's very difficult to get.
Pull out what the salient.
To get all the different points back and forth and sort of people saying, hmm, well, I'm reconsidering or, you know, I hadn't thought about that. It, it just, without transcribing the whole thing.
Yep. It just gets long. I mean, this is, this is part of minute taking, which is hard when you have a robust lengthy conversation like this, so.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
And then if we're leaving this intro paragraph, it says if a decision is, in the middle of it, it says if a decision is not made this evening, it would be very difficult to make the March twenty twenty date. And then there's a semicolon, it might even mean pushing the date out to twenty twenty one. Maybe there was some, I, I don't remember that being the discussion. The discussion was if we didn't make a decision to move forward now and we missed, not making a decision last meeting would mean missing March twenty twenty town meeting. And missing town meeting would potentially mean completion date would be offset by another year just because of construction schedules. It wasn't that the vote would be pushed off necessarily by an entire year, but that the completion of a project would potentially be pushed off by more than just the difference between March twenty and November twenty because November twenty would kind of be the backup date, hopefully for a vote for a bond. So I just wanted to clarify that. If we're keeping that intro paragraph in there, that narrative in there, I just wanted to make sure that that got clarified. But, yeah.
I'm feeling better that we maybe just say that there was a robust conversation, all five board members were in whatever, here's the link. And, you know, then, then the motion that was made and acted on, it would seem like it might be. Either that or we're going to have to transcript it, I think, because even this is not, you know, it's not context.
Right, so if I were a community member and I thought this sort of covered the whole discussion and say, wait, nobody even talked about how much this was going to cost. You know, and we did, we talked about, you know, the concerns about burdening the community and all of that. So we either need to get all of that detail in there or we need to take it out. And I would err on the side in minutes of saying what the decisions were, what the motions were and, you know, generally what the discussion was about. So.
That's good that we have, because we have the, the recording and that's a, that's definitely, that has not always existed in the past. So this is a nice opportunity to do that.
Is there a way to post that segment of the recording on the district website?
Yeah, we, we have done that.
Not, not just a link, but actually post.
Yeah, so you can click on it.
You could go to the, you could go to the channel or you could go just for that segment.
Yeah, so we've had it where you, you know, can touch to the link or you can actually already have a thing with a, with a play button, you know?
That might be a good, because we can, we can put it in the master planning and visioning segment too.
So can we ask Cory to do that? She's been really good about sort of organizing all that.
She's probably watching it as we speak. She has been, like, she, because she'll usually send me something like right this evening, like, you know, whatever. So she's been doing a good job, so it's good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So with the changes to the June sixth minutes, those are approved. I guess we won't approve those.
I wouldn't approve those until we see them again.
So June third and tenth are approved. Fourteen, tax anticipation note, this, and actions required on this. And also, I have been informed, we need to designate a signatory. And I would recommend if Brian, you're available, that we could designate you as the board's authorized signature.
Honored.
So I'm, and Amity can go into greater detail. Tax anticipation notice is basically that we need a bridge in order to make payroll and.
Do we, do we have this in the packet? Got it, I've got, yeah, sorry, I just misplaced it.
Yeah, it's just buried under a couple of other.
Assuming, assuming you, maybe you've been around before. We have in the past not always had to do tax anticipation note, generally more so than not. And the city has been really quite collaborative with us in getting us, you know, money ahead of time. And so that's been really helpful. So we haven't had to do this a lot, but basically we have to go out and borrow money to make payroll. And obviously what we're going to be paying is on the, the interest and so this is outlined there. So I don't know, Amity, anything else to add or?
What I would add is that there was a typo in the year in the first paragraph. I just noticed it said July nineteenth through September of twenty twenty. That should say September nineteenth. So the anticipation is the tax note will be paid back by September sixth because we will then have our tax money from the city. So that is wrong year on that. What happens when you're talking fiscal year and calendar year, it gets so very muddled sometimes.
All right, so do I have a ma- motion to improve this with Brian as the board's signatory with the September sixth, two thousand nineteen change on the cover?
So moved.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that is approved.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item fifteen, lease interest rates. And this is also worn for action.
Go ahead, Amity or Gary on this one.
Um, this is the annually lease equipment for our one-to-one computer program. And as well, we budgeted to these two classes. So there's actually, this is a three lease, three leases that total the six ninety-eight, two forty-eight. We do the school buses over a five-year term. The most of the one-to-one program goes through a four-year lease because they're the more expensive computers. And then the smaller three-year lease is for our Chromebooks, just for the one grade at the middle school to get them on the current cycle.
Amity, I want to point out that, that what was in their packet.
There was an updated version.
That's true. And I don't know if the updated version was emailed.
Nope, it's by their place.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, and it's confusing because it has the same date on it.
Okay.
But the new one reflects the lease amounts of, they're, they're the same in the, they're the same for the first. Actually, the revised one has, has the, the cent digits on it. Are you following me? So that's, they've got, so it's. That's the updated. And can you help us to understand why the change?
Why it went up?
The, the computer Dell had a change in their pricing on one of the segments of whatever Mike had bid on. And I can't remember exactly which device it was that changed. So it increased the, the need for the lease to go up. It was about a fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Is that in the contract that price increases?
So it, and I, and so I'm sorry, I'm probably not speaking the exact right thing. But I, I, do you know the deep, I was in Seattle, so I have to apologize. Was it that they got more devices?
There's additional devices and there was a, there was a mistake in the initial quote.
And Dell's quote, Dell's pricing is all under the state contract? So we don't have to go out to bid because it's under the state approved contract? So that pricing, I think, was still within their contract? If that helps answer the question, I'm not really sure.
Well, yeah, it's a little bit of if you put out an RFP and the vendor makes a mistake, is there something that allows a rebid? Or do they get disqualified? But you're answering the question.
It's sort of a different RFP. The RFP was actually for the lease.
Right.
And not the, not the equipment. Because the, the equipment falls under the state bidding process.
This is really a financing.
Yes, this is just a finance, the equipment.
As a finance.
Correct.
The interest rate hasn't changed.
No, that is correct. Exactly, same company, same interest rate. It was just a change in the dollars. So there is, I think, a, an resolution that just needs to be signed by the board so that David can then, when the lease documents are finalized, he has the approval to sign them.
So do I have a motion to approve the lease interest rate recommendation as indicated in this revised memo at our places?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's approved. All right, agenda, item sixteen, consent agenda.
So again, hires in here, we're getting near the end. We'll have some additions in, in, at our July meeting. But this, again, pretty close to rounds out our hires. I do want to, you know, I have been keeping track of, you know, kind of our ups and downs. We have some that are higher than what we, what we were wanting on our general objectives. But currently we're, the last round that I reported out, we were thirty-three thousand to the good. This, this, these hires were twenty-five thousand to the good. With some of them obviously being over what was initially budgeted. We're now at a fifty-eight thousand, four oh five in total to the good with our new hires.
I would just say though, I mean, there are a couple of instances here where the budgeted salary looks like it was the person who's left. You know, who's retired or whatever. And I thought part of the idea was, was to, you know, work on replacing, you know, obviously, we need the best person for the job. But where there's a, I just, I'm just looking at the special education.
Yep.
Especially, and we're hiring at masters step ten, you know, masters plus fifteen, step eleven. I mean, we're, we're hiring at pretty far up the salary scale. These aren't, these aren't sort of mid-career people.
That's right.
They're, they're later in their career. And I, I just had a question of, is that market conditions? I mean, is that what's available? Or, you know, I'm just, I'm just curious how we're searching for these folks and why we're sort of hiring at that end of the salary scale.
Well, well, special education and what we're looking at is definitely, you know, you're getting individuals that are going to have masters because of the requirement of special education. And then experience often, you know, we're getting people that are coming into the field. Obviously, they're the ones that have risen to the top in the, in the best tier to make the, make the gains that we're looking at for our students. Not in all cases, but in, in, again, in, in most of those cases for special education. And again, some of these folks, you know, are, again, this is probably a second, second step. They've, they've done some time. We have a few here who've done some time in, out in the business world, have made a career change and are coming into education with, you know, again, mid, mid, mid experience, around that eight or nine years of experience. We have had, you know, we have hired, as you know, in the past, we've hired some individuals, right? Really, 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 you know, new and, and junior in the field, which is also appropriate. So as far as the budget, we, I, I haven't put the actual guideline amount on the budget. I mean, we don't necessarily know, but what we know is that the position in which they're coming into, if it's, if it's known. Obviously, in some of those replacements, we put what we had in the budget to do really kind of a, a run rate, you know, analysis for you. So again.
I had a separate question on Amanda McCarthy. I was confused, it says that she did student teaching, but her degree isn't in education, it's in psychology and justice studies. Does she have a teaching degree?
Yeah, that could, that should have said that. That's where she started and then she went back and got her degree in education.
Okay, and we also have bids on the consent agenda?
Would you like me to explain those? Okay, so in the field house, I'll try to, try to make this brief. So between the time you bonded and now, won't comment off the cuff on tariffs, but building equipment and construction costs have gone up pretty significantly. And the estimate that we got from Wyman and Lampier had us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what you bonded for to build the field house. So we did some analysis and we have the authority as a school district to act as our own general contractor. And we anticipate that we will build this same building, acting as a general contractor for about three hundred thousand dollars, which is less than what three twenty-five that you bonded for. So the three items, acting as a general contractor, that are over fifteen thousand dollars and require competitive, required competitive building are the ones that are included here. So we have the plumbing, which we had a single bidder of New England Air Systems for seventy-three thousand, seven oh seven. We had the internal, interior drywall and FRP, which East Shore Drywall was the sole bidder for twenty thousand, five eighty. And we had the site and concrete, site work and concrete work with a single bidder of SD Ireland for eighty-seven thousand, five hundred. The rest of the components of the, of the construction project all are under fifteen thousand dollars. So we, we think that we have both added efficiency, saved quite a considerable amount of money and just cost Bart and I a little time to manage the process.
Important to know.
What was the time period between when we had the, is it Wyman Lampier?
Wyman Lampier.
Yeah. When we got their estimate and when?
Oh, we got their, when we got their, we just got their estimate ninety days ago after the, all the design work was, was completed, the architectural work.
So when you say the costs went up, it would.
Between the time that you bonded.
Project and bonded.
Approved the bond.
Okay.
And now. I can't speak to how that cost estimate was developed, but, but we couldn't have built the building that you planned, hiring a general contractor for, for what was bonded for. We're going to manage to accomplish it with a little cost savings and with just some additional work from the district.
Important to know, it's not a, when I think of field house, people think big, big, big. It's really bathrooms and team rooms and kind of a.
One mechanical room and one trainer room.
So I just, I don't, I don't want to get word out there that we're doing a field house.
We just had.
We had to name it something.
It's sort of entitled in the plans.
But it's bathrooms and team room and a little bit of mechanical space.
And the usual question when it comes to these is one response on the bid?
We were fortunate, we had to work pretty hard to get one.
We were fortunate.
Yeah, you're not kidding.
It's people, contractors are extremely busy. There is a ton of work going on out there. We, we sent, sent them to three or more for each bidable.
Do you think this was more seasonal than?
What's that?
Was it more seasonal than, I mean, just the fact that we have to do it during this?
The fact that. Just the fact that by the time we finally got the plans, it was, you know, spring construction season had started and not a lot of capacity out there.
Yeah.
They are all reputable companies, two of which have worked before for the district.
Well, the outside work, particularly this year, has been challenged and resources have been tapped for sure, I know with the wet.
And my, I mean, you know, we haven't worked long enough together, Gary, but my, my concern is the integrity of the RFP system because we were obligated by law to get out and get multiple quotes. And I've seen a lot of items come by or come over the desk that really only have a single quote, which is outside the control of the school district, but it does sort of affect the integrity of that.
David? I have a concern about going forward with this. Since two weeks ago, we just instructed Doran Whittier to do a, almost a complete overhaul of this campus. And my concern is that we're going to want to accommodate the, the Doran Whittier plans as much as possible. And in my view, unlike what Doran Whittier did in all their options, the athletic fields and the track in particular are not sacrosanct. So, and in particular, it may be possible that Doran Whittier could come up with a design for our new six through twelve campus that would move the athletic fields around and it would end, ultimately end up costing less than if they had to stay out of the way of the track and have to work around it. So with that in mind, I'm kind of concerned that we're still going forward with this project, even though we might end up having to tear it down in three or four years because the track is going to be moved somewhere else and the, the, the main athletic field is going to be somewhere else.
I don't, I mean, I think your insight is good, Alex. The issue for us is that, you know, we can't hold everything up for what we don't yet know about what the community will decide. I mean, we're trying to make some good decisions and we think there's some pretty significant value to what's currently there. And I think Dor Whittier is going to work hard to work with that, you know, including what we'll add here. So this is not dissimilar from some of the stuff that we need to do in our buildings. Like you'd say, well, do we really have to do this? Well, it's mission critical, it's costly, we need to do this upgrade because it's a, you know, it's a life safety issue or it's a, you know, trip hazard, you know, what have you. And I liken it a little bit to the elevators. We kind of, like I said, we, we'd like to have not had to done the elevators, but we had, you know, an obligation to ensure that, you know, under ADA and student access, we did it. So I think, I think that, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think this will go into the queue with Dor Whittier and under, you know, planning and judgment. And I think you heard them at the meeting, I don't know, or it might have been a board member, saying that if in fact it's in the best case to move it, then obviously, you know, we're looking at, you know, the, the offset dollars to do that are obviously going to need to be factored into that whole equation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I don't.
I hear, I hear your concern. But the taxpayers have already spent a significant amount of money on not only the field, but the design, the bonding work, everything that's gone into the, to the project thus far.
I mean, we're hopeful that whatever design comes up that they come up with will actually be able to take into account from topography of the land to current, current conditions that are on the land and that being, you know, the, the field. And can there be a plan that appropriately does that, you know, including, you know, road and traffic and all of those things, right? And where the, where the limitations are. Yeah, I disagree with your point. We're just, again, it could be, it could be four or five years, four years before we really see the outcome. It could be never. You know, it could be that we go a long time and then we can't deprive, we, right now, we're in a situation where we're probably losing some pretty significant revenue because we don't have, you know, bathrooms readily available to be able to rent it out to a larger VPA event. I mean, we do pretty well that way, but our, our site is certainly lacking and it's not great for if you're young or old and you're needing to use the bathroom and you've got a, you know, there's only two porta-potties and you gotta, or you gotta get all the way to school, into school to, to use it, where it's not, it's not a great situation and can be a little bit problematic for individuals, young or old.
That satisfy your question?
No, it's, it is, it, well, it was a concern more than a question and I don't know if it satisfies my concern.
Fair. It's fair. All right. We'll move on to agenda item seventeen, AP orders forty-five, forty-six and forty-seven. Any questions? All right. We have an AP order checked to the Howard Center in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Not from here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?